Okay. We're opening the planning board meeting for October 1st. This meeting is being videotaped, which includes audio. All right, so, is there someone here representing Fern Ridge Estates?
Lou is not, was not available today and there's been no, um, no updates. Nothing has changed since the last time we met as far as Bob McGee's status. So...
I thought we were just getting an explanation for things that we didn't quite grasp.
Didn't we also get an email today about that?
You did get an email.
About Winston Road.
Oh, the one about Winston Road.
Yeah, but Bob had sent to Lou. He still hasn't applied for his street opening permit as required. So, I guess we'll table that for the next meeting.
All right. So, let's see, Ken Brown.
Yep.
For Colonial Fence, 32 Pine Street. Modification to eliminate the frontage road.
Gotta get him a microphone.
Betsy, can you grab him a mic?
Use the microphone for the cable audio.
Oh, I thought I did done it. Is it not working?
It's green.
Okay, green's good.
You okay?
Is it working? Can you hear me? It's working?
Well, the modification is in your plan. There's also something that was never taken out of zoning that requires connections between properties. Is that what you're trying to remove, is the connections between properties?
Well, we've eliminated it at town meeting. The frontage road was eliminated as far as I'm concerned.
That's the design of the frontage road that existed at the time, but it's still required to have connections between the properties. It's still in zoning.
Thank you. Okay, I wasn't aware of that.
Well, that is, it's still in there. The only thing that went away was all the details on what's required for a frontage road.
Okay, so if the details are gone away, how are we gonna build a frontage road? We're not?
Do you have a frontage road on your property now?
Well, I do. I built on the front of my property. Two specifications for a frontage road, yes. There's no connections and probably will never be any.
So, are you looking to modify what you have right now or just not make the connections?
Not make the connections and eliminate the right of way.
Well, the, the, um, how do you assume that it's never going to be needed to connect those properties?
Am I assuming that?
Yeah.
Well, it was my understanding, which is probably an incorrect understanding based on what you're telling me right now, that we went to town meeting to eliminate the frontage road in the town of Norfolk and get rid of it once and for all, and I thought that was what happened at town meeting. I guess I'm misinformed of what the town meeting vote was for. So, that's what I assumed, that we do no longer have a frontage road in the town of Norfolk.
Gino, could you let them know what the exact wording is for the connections that are still required between properties? Go ahead, Chuck.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's two things. There's the frontage road and then there's linkage between adjacent properties. So, I think you're coming before the board looking to eliminate.
To not connect.
Language regarding the frontage road, but other requirements, should they become helpful or necessary to the town, they might survive this process, the linkage between adjacent properties.
So, on all the properties in Norfolk, the linkage is still available. Both sides of the road, 115, 1A, frontage road in the town of Norfolk is what you're telling me, is still a viable?
The town reserves the right.
The right.
To require because at some point in time.
So, we didn't get rid of the by, we didn't get rid of the bylaw.
But it may not, it may not be a frontage in the front of a parcel.
So, a linkage could be.
I understand, it might not be in the front.
It could be, you know, the side.
It might be the side.
It may not conform to.
Still considered the frontage road.
Well, let me finish. It may not conform to the requirements of a roadway in terms of, and there's other considerations, okay? And there's differentiation between a linkage and a frontage road. So, I think we shouldn't confuse those two things, and you shouldn't do that either.
Right.
I guess that's my request to you.
I should just consider my property and my linkage and tie-ups. Is that what you're telling me?
Well, as far as I'm concerned, and what I'm looking at, is a request regarding frontage road. So, you need to tell this board in no uncertain terms why you're here.
To eliminate the tie-ins on my frontage road at Colonial Fence Company. Now, I can't do that.
I think there's, you're co-mingling.
There's a lot of confusion. I don't even know why I'm here then because town meeting confused me.
Well, let's hear this out now that both sides of these properties are now built out. One, the town meeting did in fact get rid of the frontage road requirement in zoning. And take your word for it that the linkage is still in fact in there. Now, that we have the car wash being built out on the left and we have drainage and four kicks on the right, correct me if I'm wrong, and you also have your existing detention pond there, and if I remember from my days of four kicks, it also slopes down into some type of almost swell or something in that.
It is, yeah. It's a big swell in the front there.
Um, I mean realistically, given these two properties, are we ever going to connect with them?
And we don't know what's gonna happen in the future. I mean, when, I mean, if this is no longer here in 20 years and somebody builds a big restaurant over here, they may want a connection to this side, but this is his site. Well, right, yeah, but...
Steve, a moment ago you asked Gino to look up, and he's ready, I think.
Yes. It says parking areas of adjacent lots shall have reasonable and convenient off-street vehicular connections. Where adjacent property has not been developed, provision shall be made for future off-street connections with adjacent properties. Reserve strips of land or other measures which preclude or are designed to prevent such off-street connections shall not be permitted.
So, that still exists in zoning?
I think what you're hearing is that it's highly unlikely, given the current configuration of the businesses on this property.
That anything would be...
Anything will happen.
Right.
But 20 years from now, you know, these guys with a car wash decide to tear it down and build something else, there might be a requirement.
Right. I mean, a million, yeah, all kinds of hypothetical situations can happen in any town. I understand that, right?
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Basically, what, I'm not trying to avoid that in any shape, manner, or form. It was the frontage road terminology that we had, and if that's not considered frontage road, as the term says, frontage road, and we've eliminated that bylaw.
Right.
That's the term I want to get rid of, frontage road. If there's ever a connection, I'm not trying to get rid of any future connections that may or may not take place.
Okay.
It's the frontage road and the current right-of-way in front of my property at the current time. Now, if there's gonna be future connections or future rights-of-way, that's fine. I'm just talking about the current one we have in place right now, the one that I did think we eliminated at town meeting. So, future anything, future connections, future development on that property, future connections to four kicks or anything else that the town deems necessary, we'll deal with that at the time. But I don't believe the terminology is a frontage road anymore.
What, where's the...
Well, I think we're getting on the same page, which is a good thing. Okay.
Connections or whatever the town has kept in place to save the town for.
The linkage will survive tonight's meeting.
Okay.
The linkage will, you know, as far as I'm concerned.
I would agree with that.
In terms of the frontage road, now, that's an appropriate discussion to have because there was justification for eliminating the frontage road. So, I think, you know, your question, your request of the board is reasonable, and we should, we should discuss that this evening.
Okay.
But in the context of a frontage road.
Yeah, my confusion is eliminated.
So, he wants that terminology of the easement at that section, that terminology subtracted.
Is this a D.A. right-of-way?
I don't remember the terminology in the decision. Do you remember the terminology in the decision?
I believe, I don't have it in front of me, but I believe in all these frontage roads where there was a connection to adjacent property, we're requiring an easement for that frontage road to be in place. So, most likely that there is one in place.
That was eliminated.
And now, the requirement for it is eliminated.
Right.
But yours is still in place because it was done before it was, the requirement was eliminated, so now you want to come to client.
I'm here to eliminate, I'm here to eliminate it.
Right.
So, that there's no more, longer an easement on it?
Well, is this a major or a minor modification?
I would say minor. I mean, we have to take that to a vote, but that's my opinion. It doesn't change the nature of the site enough.
No, it doesn't change the nature of the site.
I don't think it changes anything other than the current use right now.
He's not bound to have by law anymore.
The paper frontage road easement.
If I decide to develop that land that I still have left and you decide to make connections at the time, what I'm understanding is the town has the perfect right to do whatever it's necessary, to do another curb cut, to connect us to four kicks, to do whatever you may deem necessary at the time.
As part of the site plan.
As part of the site plan. Personally, I don't think it would be a good idea. I never thought the frontage road was anyway.
Well, if, what happens if we say it's okay to give up the easement? Because I'm assuming that if we require linkage, we'd require an easement anyway, wouldn't we?
No, because the linkage can be their own personal property. It doesn't have to be an easement held by the town.
Well, yeah, you have to have a cross easement for the people that are using one piece of property to use the...
But you would, if you would deem those as separate easements, wouldn't you, that's not the easement he has right now is across front of this property.
I think it would create more harm with whatever kind of connections you're gonna try to do on that particular portion of 115. If the time ever did come to try to connect to four kicks, connect to the car wash, do any kind of frontage road connections at that time, I don't even see it as a viable solution in the town of Norfolk to do any kind of connections at that location from 1A to the town of Foxborough for a frontage road without creating chaos in lawsuits. The frontage road wasn't even developed properly. If we had a frontage road in the town of Norfolk, it would have been a road, it would have been a barrier, and then it would have been a parking area. My parking lot is a frontage road. It is the most unsafe road if you are gonna turn it into a road you could possibly do with perpendicular parking to a road. There needed to be a road, a frontage road owned by somebody. I've got the largest frontage in the town of Norfolk on Route 115. Some other person has 50 feet. I've got 1,000 feet. We have hardships created by insurance, plowing, maintenance, all kinds of problems with the frontage road. As it stands as a bylaw, it's one reason we wanted to get rid of it. It just was never developed properly in the town of Norfolk from day one. If it had been, the town could have purchased the property all the way off of Route 115, developed their own frontage road, owned it as a town, maintained it as a road, and plowed it and shored it. Because I'm not gonna assure 1,000 feet and maintain it for somebody else that has 50 feet. It's a hardship waiting for some kind of problem if in fact it ever does take place. So, I couldn't have been happier to see it eliminated. It was, it was not developed and created properly in the beginning. And most frontage roads that do have a precedent, if you do look at them, they do have the buffer.
The question I had about the cross easements.
Well, first, one thing I want to kind of make the distinction between the linked parking and the frontage road. I think the intent of the frontage road, not I think, it was clear in the way it was in the bylaw originally, is that there would only be a curb cut every so many feet. So, some properties could end up with no curb cut of their own, which in fact happened in this adjacent property, while others would have the curb cut and then the frontage road would be used to access it. The linked parking is not intended to preclude every property from having their own curb cut. It's more, in a way, a more informal thing where for the convenience of patrons who were going from one business to the other to just connect through the parking lot rather than go back out to the main street. I think that's the intent, the difference in intent of those two things. But having said that, to answer your question specifically, I suppose if there's not a connection easement, then what's, I mean, this doesn't require an eas, this language doesn't specifically require an easement.
It just requires...
It just requires provisions for connection.
And in other developments that we have recently looked at, where we've suggested there be connections, we have not required an easement.
So, in terms of the actual decision for that property, are the words "frontage road" included in the decision?
Yes.
They are?
Yes.
Okay. And so, this gentleman, I believe, is asking to have that language stricken?
Yes.
From the original decision, basically, and do that as a minor modification. Correct me if I'm wrong, I think that's what...
No, you're right. And I think there is also a second, a separate decision, which was common when we did these, a special permit to waive the construction of the frontage road to the abutting property. There was probably the site plan and then a separate decision that was a special permit that...
Correct.
That waived that, yeah.
You're correct.
So, that special permit would disappear, would be null and void. If you decide to agree to eliminate the frontage road, then that special permit, oh, well, actually, I guess it doesn't have to because it says he doesn't have to construct it, so that would still be, you don't have to really...
Still viable.
Yeah.
So, maybe it's worth, if you would, Steve, just give me an opportunity. I mean, the planning board did spend a fairly significant amount of time looking at frontage road and looking at the practical aspects of frontage roads in that district. So, basically, looking at the four quadrants at the intersection of 1A and 115. And in two of the quadrants, there's substantial wetlands which a frontage road would significantly inhibit the one's ability to develop the parcels that are there in terms of how much area would be left, how much setback off of the roadway. If in fact, you know, a frontage road was installed, there would be a fairly limited distance between the frontage road and the wetlands on the back of the property. So, in two quadrants, it would restrict the town's ability to generate revenue because it would restrict the amount of commercial activity that could take place. So, in two quadrants, you know, that scenario was pretty evident to the board. Now, in the quadrant where we have the restaurants presently, the horse and carriage, et cetera, you know, that is pretty fully developed at this point.
Pretty existing.
So, you know, if you look at that situation and now a similar situation, we have the medical office building and some other things being constructed. So, when you look at the situation in its entirety, the concept of frontage road really didn't make much sense at this point in time. Now, you know, if you go back far enough.
It did.
Prior to some of the projects being constructed, it was a little less clear. So, hindsight being 2020, I think the board took a look at it and proposed to the residents of the town at town meeting that the frontage road be eliminated, and in fact, that action was taken. So, I think just to ensure that, you know, the residents of the town have confidence in the process that took place in the elimination of the frontage road, I felt that that was important to share, to share to you and to share to everyone that there was due diligence done by the planning board a year ago in support of the elimination of the frontage roads. But the linked parking has always survived to my knowledge in terms of every project that I've participated in.
And I wasn't aware of that, so I apologize for not keeping up with that, but...
Well, I do have the concern about the cross easement stuff because the only other two developments that went in down there required pedestrian cross easements. And it had to do with the grading.
Right.
So...
But they weren't easements. They were just, they were linking.
They were linkages, right.
Right, but they weren't easements. And I think, I think Mr. Brown said he didn't have a problem with the...
I don't have a problem with that. I have a problem with the easement.
It's just that, and if these things are to be developed or redeveloped in the future within the site plan approval process, we have the right to say, put a linkage here.
With an easement, if we wanted to.
If we wanted to at that time, you know? If that car wash goes away in 20 years, like somebody's example was, that's a redevelopment and it gives us the option to do so at that time.
Or if it's a disaster with having the driveway out on the roadway.
Not going back there again.
Well, you know, if the chief of police says, you guys have to make that connection over there because this is a disaster.
He also says that the linkages are... He also says that the linkages would be a disaster at the time, too. And we may call them linkages, but that's what we will call them now because he also says that. And I agree with him 100 percent. If we tried to link four kicks with Joe Fran and Colonial Fence, even without the car wash, it would have been a nightmare, the way the frontage road stands now, without that additional buffer so parking could be safe and we weren't backing into a line of traffic that's backing up in front of us. We don't have that with the current frontage road design. Even though I could argue the point or bring the town to court someday because I got 1,000 feet and I'm gonna have a hardship and the other guy with 50 feet doesn't, there's a big problem with that also. I'm not plowing and maintaining and paving and doing all the work for somebody that's not. So, we don't have the design done right. And I do agree with everybody on this board about the frontage road necessity in some areas and some towns, it's ideal. It works great. It's a safety factor, but not where we're at right now. And even if mine was turned into a frontage road, it would be a nightmare with my tractor-trailers. We don't even have the right configuration of different uses that would make the frontage road viable. And I wouldn't want to see families from four kicks trying to travel down when I got 45-foot tractor-trailers running through my property. So, we don't even have the right uses to make it viable in that situation right now. Now, I didn't come here to argue all of those points. That would be an argued point if somebody was trying to force a frontage road on me. But right now, I didn't understand the terminology. I'm okay with that. I'm just trying to get rid of the easement, get rid of the terminology of the frontage road. That's all I thought I was coming here for. The rest of it is down the road. If I decide to do something on that property next door and you say, I gotta connect here, I gotta connect here, I might say, have a nice day. It'll stay woods and trees for the rest of my lifetime and my kid's lifetime. We won't, we won't generate any more taxes here because of linkages and frontage roads. And that's one of the reasons I stood up at town meeting and argued against the frontage road is because it was holding back development. If I didn't get a special permit not to build the frontage road, Colonial Fence wouldn't be there. And as I said at town meeting, it's an asset, I believe, to this town. If you don't think so, that's fine, but I believe it's an asset at this point. Some people did not think it was. I think it's a nice entrance to the town and that's why I built it in my hometown. But I would not have built in the town of Norfolk and brought my revenue to my hometown to do what I wanted to do for the town of Norfolk if that frontage road stood. It was a stickling point, so I'm glad I got a reason not to build it, and I didn't want to spend the money to even build the one I have in front of me. That was close call for me to move to another town. So, it's been a problem child, and some of these connections might be, too. So, we want to develop Norfolk to make it viable for business to come in, which I think we have. We've eliminated everybody's frontage road as it is. So, the connection's fine if something takes place. I'll have the right then to decide whether I build or I don't build based on future development, not on what I have now where I thought I eliminated it. So, that's where I stand with the frontage road and the easement and eliminating it and just trying to make my property safe. Car wash, I don't see any connections ever going on with Colonial Fence, even if they do eliminate the car wash and that little 30,000 square feet of tractor-trailers and cars and residents trying to mix with a commercial building like mine and what we have going on. It's different entities beside us, so I think that really has to be looked at also. So, anyway.
Well, does anyone want to make a motion? Have to start by a consideration of a minor modification.
I'd like to make a motion to consider a minor modification to the existing site plan of Colonial Fence at 32 Pine Street.
All those in, all those in favor?
Can we have a bit of discussion before we go?
Oh, if you wish.
There was a decision that we, the board rendered some time ago that allowed him to begin to do his construction many years ago. Is that decision available to be referenced and read?
It's right here.
That's the plan.
Well, the decision's built into the plan.
It's on the plan.
Is the order of conditions on there, Chris?
Here they are. And that was the ZBA decision. That's the planning board decision.
And the reason I ask the question is I think it would be appropriate to at least reference the clause and section that we're trying to eliminate here as opposed to just do it, you know, generically, so to speak, particularly since they are available in plain language right here in this drawing.
Gino, can I ask you a question? Whatever's gonna be referenced on this plan, for me to go to the registry of deeds and eliminate the right-of-way that's registered at the registry of deeds for that piece of property, are we talking eliminating the terminology, frontage road and easement, for me to eliminate those rights-of-way at the registry of deed that I recorded?
I would think so, yeah.
Would you have to record a new plan?
I'm not sure that he would have to record a new plan.
Just to release an easement.
Yeah.
And I think town council would probably have to do that, right?
You could release a document that says you voted to release it and then that could be recorded.
Okay.
I would think. I don't think town council would necessarily have to do that.
Yeah, there's a...
There's a lot of reading here.
There's a hundred of them, huh? Yeah. I wasn't prepared for that. I know.
And on second thought...
I was hoping it was like 20, you could pick one out, you know?
On second thought, the special permit may also need, after all, need to be voided because I think it says he doesn't have to build the frontage road, but he has to provide the easement for it. So, that would also need to be, if it does say that, and I think that's on there as well.
Well, I think it's obvious it's on there. We just have, it's hard to find, but my point is...
Did you find any reference to it?
I, it talks all around it, but it doesn't specifically mention frontage road, the words "frontage road" in here. It talks about convenience, safety, convenience and safety of vehicular and pedestrian movement within the site and in relation to adjacent streets, property, or improvements, but it doesn't specifically...
Technically, the frontage road would be assumed because it's actually a requirement at that time. So, therefore, it wouldn't have been a waiver or anything else.
But the easement is the issue, is it not?
The special permit might, like someone just said, might have had the language in it.
And that's not on there, the special permit?
Well, the ZBA decision's on, back then, they were doing the special permit, so it might be on this.
Aye, aye, aye.
That's a good point. Maybe that's why we didn't...
Well, I don't think the ZBA did the special permits for frontage roads, though. That was always, that was always planning board, yeah.
Fair enough. Well, then, since it's difficult to extract that in a public meeting here where we've got a whole bunch of other issues, at least we could get to a motion when it's appropriate to get to the motion and reference that, subject to finding it offline and saying it's section such and such and clause so-and-so and whatever.
At least vote on the motion that you...
Yeah, yeah, subject to that.
Is it subject to finding it and recording which one it is?
Right, right.
Okay, so, in this section, it says the applicant requests one variance and five special permits as follows. A, variance from bylaws, section J 4A4, location of drives and streets on same side of highway to allow less than 450-foot separation of a major entrance. Parenthetically, only 444.5 feet from the four kicks entrance. B, a special permit in accordance with bylaws, section, uh, Jim, does this continue? F 7E parking signage, aquifer and water supply, no, it's not, I don't see it there. Okay, so I don't see it in the special permits referenced here, so...
Well, when we do the, well, the motions are made and seconded, at least consider it as a minor modification.
Yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Secondly, now we have to discuss.
Okay.
Can we, can we word it somehow that we can appropriately reference the...
Correct. Book, chapter, and verse.
Tom is always good at that wording. Too bad he's not here. Well, we can just say that we, the motion would be just to eliminate the term "frontage road" and the frontage road...
Frontage road requirement, road and easement.
And the frontage road easement. Open to rece... Open to receive information of which section of the decision the references to the frontage road came from. How does that sound?
You know that, that's...
Did it make sense as a...
As she wordsmithed, were you?
Steve, the only thing that was, seemed to be missing was the reference to the easement, which is...
No, no, I...
It was, okay, I missed it.
Frontage road, frontage road easement, and a special permit to build the frontage road.
There you go.
I think we're speaking the same language here. Walter just wanted to make sure that detail was included and... Is that in the form of a motions?
Well, I get...
Maybe Vette can read it back.
Yeah, yeah.
I think what was missing, Walter, what I think you meant to say was to reference the sections.
Yes, to reference the section of the original decision.
I had said that, but I didn't quite say, "reference the sections." So Vette can put that in, I guess. We all set?
Yep.
Want to read it back?
I'll read what I have. See, move to eliminate the term "frontage road" and "frontage road easement" and is open to receiving information regarding the section of the original decision that references the frontage road and frontage road easement.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Because you can't repeat it.
Yeah. All those in favor?
I actually, I was wondering if we could modify it to just confirm that the bylaw requiring linkages still applies.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Just for clarification, since that seems to be a question.
Fine, understood by all parties.
And should it not reference his property or this decision number or something? Because the way it's written, it could be anybody.
Put down 32 Pine Street referencing that.
Right.
That's what this modification is.
Yeah, we have the reference on there.
Yeah.
32 Pine Street, please put that in there, so you've got an address.
Right.
Are we ready to vote?
Most of the made and seconded, Steve, so...
All right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm abstaining on that one.
Okay.
All right. You're all done.
You're welcome.
Good morning, ladies, thank you.
All right, there's a request for postponement on Northeast Tractor?
Yes, please.
When's our next hearing? I don't have my phone.
We don't... Oh, is that right?
No.
Not a three-year-old phone that I was bragging about.
Big handicap.
My planner's always working. It's always working.
I just gave up paper. I just gave it.
That's not a...
Well, we've been doing it two weeks...
That's not an open hearing, Steve.
We've been doing it two weeks now.
I mean, that's a business item.
Yeah, so we don't have to...
Oh, okay.
We don't have to pick a date right now.
That's right, right.
We can add them in later.
Yeah, we can.
Yeah.
We can do it later.
So is Mr. Matulowicz here? You don't look like Mr. Matulowicz. Not the one I know. Does he have a mic? Yeah, a microphone, please. What happened to the other mic?
Did he take it, pocket it?
Did Ken bring it home with him?
You could identify yourself for the record.
For the record, my name is Alexander Francis Xavier Matulowicz Esquay. Would you like to be cursed for the cross like that to have to be? I am the son of Al Matulowicz, who you may know from Matulowicz versus the Planning Board. Were you the attorney for the Planning Board?
No, I'm not an attorney.
Oh. Were you on the Planning Board for that one?
I was, I was the chairman at the time.
Okay. So I'm not here...
I'm the one that went to court.
Okay, I'm not here for Matulowicz versus the Planning Board, round two. Here's my story, and I'm sticking to it. Al Matulowicz died in August 2010.
Oh, sorry to hear that.
I came out here at the age of two from Dorchester. I'm at Lee Han's house, and I'm laughing and saying, "All these trees around you, I planted them." And so my view of Norfolk is a little bit different than most people. And not too long ago, Bob Shepherd, who in another incarnation, I was told, put in the computer systems in the town hall or something like that years ago, I don't know. Him and his wife both, at someplace separately, they didn't kibitz about it, but they both said to me, "You know, Frederickson Road is the nicest street in Norfolk. You know why? Because of your old man and the way he developed it." It made me feel good. Well, I've given it some time, so I'm not making a rash decision. But I got 17.05 acres. When I was doing it to appease my folks, it took me six hours to cut the grass with the ride mower, the push mower, and the weed whacker. I don't have it in me anymore. My get-up-and-go, I need it for the gym. My old man used to say, "You're ambitious, you want to get some exercise." You know, I could put 25 hours in a week there just maintaining the place. It's too much for me. I'm a celibate priest, I've got no wife and kids. So far, what I've done is I went to the Mills Cookout, and I talked to the only guy on my father's side of the family, might be flush enough, to consider making an offer. And he seemed excited. But who knows what that means? So before I made a move and did anything, I figured the smart thing to do, in memory of my father, who did, according to the neighbors, develop the nicest street in Norfolk, not screw it up, and asked the Planning Board, "What do you think I should do?" I, you know, everybody and their brother, I have not lacked unsolicited advice. Everything from, you know, sell it, develop it, to auction it, to this, to that, to get a real estate. Like I said, I made a comment to a relative, and he showed an interest, and that's as far as it's gone. And I have a plan that I found in the toy room that my father had made in 2002 or 2003. I can still remember, I believe it was in the early 1990s, that there were rumors floating that the town of Norfolk was going to take Frederickson Road by eminent domain across the, what you want to call it, the yard, and hook up Frederickson Road with the cul-de-sac that was in the back that they created with the capacity for hooking it up. And at that point in time, I know that he was thinking of sticking a house right there so as to prevent that from happening. And that never materialized. And then I've shown this plan, you know, different people have asked, and I've shown it to people. And I have no idea how valid or good it is. But who best to give me their two cents worth than the Planning Board of the town of Norfolk, who, like I said, I'm not looking to create Matulowicz versus the Planning Board, round two. I've said to people, "I don't have nothing to do with you people. I want to sell it and let it be somebody else's property." And so I'm not going to be your friend and not your enemy. This is what was created for my old man back in 2002, 2003.
You're going to put it out a little furrow so we can all look at it.
There's some things that happen, so... One guy asked me this question. "Why don't you do like your old man and just sell a house lot every couple of years?" And in looking at that plan, I don't think that that's possible. But I don't know, because I've appeared in front of the Court of Claims, the SJC, and you name it, but never in front of a Planning Board. I don't know nothing about real estate. In a battle of wits, I would lose if you're talking real estate.
Oh, so he actually wanted to connect it to Opio, huh?
Well, this is a plan, like I said, that was drafted in when? 2002. So you're talking, I was 40 years old.
So the parcels, the 17 acres? You said 17 acres, correct?
Right now, my tax bill says that I got 17.05 acres. After my father died, just before he died, he'd given this right of way to Rita Shepherd and Bob Shepherd. After he died, I got two tax bills. One for the rest, and then one for this piece here. I sold it to Weddleton, priced it to sell. I sold it to Weddleton. I'm hearing noises that somebody's going to build something there soon. Now, I don't know, for example, you see where the house and the other structures are, if there's enough frontage on the other side past the yellow house, where there was a reception on Frederickson Road last Saturday. The people who owned it came back from DC. He's running the Harbor Motel in Boston, by the way, one of the five-star hotels in Boston. I mean, the people on this street are not a celebrity list, but it's a nice street. And so like I said, I, my personal choice would be to try to find some millionaire who had a dream and show him what he could turn it into.
So your 17 acres, those 2.34 would be deducted from the 17.05?
No, that 17.05 is what's left.
What's left. Could you just show us?
Now, this is where your house is now, right?
No, no, my house is right here. This is, in fact, let me look to double check. Could you do me a favor? See Lot B? Says existing dwelling in barn, okay? Now, you want a piece of Norfolk trivia? You know how my old man got this property? In 1948, it was on the front page of the Boston Post. It was the biggest raid in the history of revenueing. They grabbed the biggest still in New England. It was being run by Frederickson on that property. He went to Leavenworth, and when he got out, he couldn't bootleg anymore. His kid didn't want the property, so he sold the whole thing to my old man. That's how my old man got it.
So what you're saying is the 17 acres comprises that...
This. Which would, from the way this thing cuts it up, it would be lots, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 6 lots to sell, because Lot A has been sold. Right now, there's a yellow house on that. My mother held out for an extra 20 grand to make sure to... My mother was a cheap Polack, and she was peeved to have to sell that piece of property. I heard the crap at home on that one.
Well, now, we've, we've signed plans for lots.
Really?
I'm trying to figure out which ones they are.
I have, I have an A and R. I think this is what remains. This is what I have.
Somebody was telling me that there's a shortage of inventory in Norfolk.
Shortage of what?
Inventory. See, I didn't know, is the Planning Board, would they prefer, be happier if I gave this to somebody to develop or to sell to a one-person owner, or what?
Well, I'm sure the school system would allow you, would ravi, sold to a single person that would live on it.
Is that the biggest gripe that you guys face?
Well, that's what the majority of the town complains about, is the impact of these houses on the school system.
Because you've got water to the end of Frederickson Road.
We're here, lying this...
Is there any gas, is there any gas in Norfolk?
Some section.
Just over here. Not into the neighborhood.
I've been asked 15, I feel like I've been interrogated back there.
Yeah, it comes in from Medfield on the other side.
You have gas, right?
Oh, I thought you did.
What is this?
This is another project by the Shepherd family.
That was to do this right-of-way thing, right? You make this into an estate lot. You gave the permission to turn the end of it, and you've entered the right-of-way into an estate lot.
We're just trying to make sure that we're on the same page.
That's over here.
So the one who says this lot isn't showing it?
Okay.
I still can't just grasp it.
His wife brings me food.
Now, where, where does this? Why does this go to the property line? There's no dead land out there, is there?
Well, what this is, is tree line. And then after this, where you get some granite in here, is all owned by Shepherd. That he had, in fact, some builder had come and said, "Well, if you were to work with Shepherd and give him this, then he can make a couple of house lots for you, because I'm trying to make an in and an out, so that he could come in from the gravel driveway, the front part of Frederickson Road, and have the out be this." Because the Planning Board's saying that you can't do any development unless you've got an in and an out.
Right, because this roadway is like thousands of feet long or something.
And then I've been shocked to find that he hasn't been able to find a buyer for this estate lot, but he's not been promoting that, but more of his home. And I've watched over the years, no, no one kicking the tires. And so...
So Steve, you know, in terms of the cul-de-sac, you know, the 500-foot maximum that's at...
Somebody was saying that in Norfolk, they're trying to make a policy to have everything cut through. So are you looking to want to have Frederickson Road attached to the cul-de-sac?
If someone wanted to have a cul-de-sac here...
Because they're saying for fire, for fire truck reasons, they'd want that.
We would have required them to have, if it was under 500 feet, and there was adjacent property that could be developed, we would always require a way of accessing the property so that we could always get a cut through.
So that would be relevant to future development unless it did connect, you'd the 500-foot?
This would have to connect, because that's what the court case was about.
Okay, okay.
You see, the court case was about what would a public, when the SJC pulled it, to quantify it on what is a public way, which, between, I'm only the one in spite of his lawyer. I mean, half the evidence his lawyer tried to, should have wanted to introduce. Like, I would have said to the attorney, I said, "Do me a favor. File a motion for review. Get in the car with the judge, have him drive down Frederickson Road, and say, 'Where does the road end?'" And that would be the case. He goes, "That's brilliant, I'll file the motion." He never did. And I know that as far as I, as far as we know, Frederickson Road ends at the mailbox, where the water hydrant is. Am I correct?
I don't know what the landmarks are on that roadway.
Because, can you, have you ever gone down Frederickson Road?
Yes.
Yeah, I've been on it many times.
Okay, see, if you're coming up the hill, the last house built is this yellow house on the left. Past that would be, I would presume to be, frontage that swings around. And I don't know if it's enough when this guy said, "Why don't you just sell a house lot, Matulowicz?" Could I do that? Would you guys be peeved? You know, I want to do something to keep my father's good name intact. Please the Planning Board and keep them on good terms. And at the same time, I'm looking to move on with my life. I got too many bad memories. You know, my sister died at 10, my other sister died at the age of 24. My mother had her own problems. My old man was a walking example of Job, according to John F. Kennedy's first cousin, the parish priest, Father Fitzgerald. He pointed it on the barber chair one time and said, "You're a modern-day example of Job." He used to watch John Wayne movies for lessons.
Well, you know, anyone could develop this if they wanted to. This, I think this cul-de-sac's a little short, isn't it?
It looks, it looks... What's the timeframe on something like this? Like, for example, I'm getting a little coarse in this stuff. Like, protest is from December till March?
Nope.
March to May? No, December to May. December to May, okay. Now, is this a kind of...
Well, this has never been filed or filed.
No, 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 this was created, I believe, by my father. It's the only thing that I've found in going over his belongings in terms of any plan for development of the property. And I'm curious to know, before I make a move, what the will or the desire or the thoughts of the Planning Board are. Like, for example, on the one hand, you're saying, "Yeah, we do have a lack of inventory." On the other, then there's the beef about the schools. We're talking 6 lots here, it wouldn't be enough to kill anybody.
Well, it may not be 6 lots. I mean, this cul-de-sac looks a little short. There's a minimum length for a cul-de-sac.
What if you eliminate the cul-de-sac and just put a cut through?
If you put a cut through, you could probably curve it a little bit and try to get an extra lot out of it.
Because I don't think it's given an extra lot here. I don't know, I mean, I don't know anything about this kind of stuff.
Yeah, that's what they're, that's what they put the cul-de-sac in for, was just for that one extra lot.
Right. I mean, worst cases, I got 5, not 6 lots.
Right.
With all due respect, Mr. Matulowicz, it's something, since the concept plan was drawn up by Paul Cutler, or at least his company down there, Landmark. You know, Paul would probably, because he's a regular truck practitioner here, that would probably be the best place to go with a lot of what-ifs. And, you know, and he's used to the rules.
Well, if the question is, what if, what would the Planning Board say? Well, the only way to find out the answer to that question is ask the Planning Board.
I'm going to take a stab at answering your question, and everybody, this is my personal opinion as a member of the Planning Board, so others may feel free to disagree with me. But I feel that as a member of the board, I'm pro-growth. That's why I joined the board to represent growth in our town in a smart way. That's, that's why I joined the board, to represent growth in our town in a smart way that would meet the values of our town. So growth in this neighborhood, I'm not opposed to, particularly the kind of growth that, you know, you're indicating might be, it's residential.
Who knows how wide a date this is?
It's residential in nature. It would meet the requirements of frontage roads. It doesn't look like it would require a lot of special variances or permits, so it's fitting in within the quality of the neighborhood, it's fitting in within the quality of our bylaws. I think from my perspective, I'd love to see the connection to the other neighborhood, and that's something that we are proponents of, for lots of reasons, not just for emergency vehicles, but for quality of...
Listen to this linkage discussion, it seems to be a town policy of some kind of variety.
Well, different, for different reasons than what we were talking about earlier, but there's a quality of connecting neighborhoods and allowing people to kind of share a community and share resources and share space. So from my perspective, you know, nothing that you're presenting here is objectionable. Um, you know, it's every person's right that owns land in this town to develop it as they see fit, so we couldn't say, "Hey, we'd love to see you have two houses or five houses." I mean, it's up to you to develop it the way that you see fit for your needs, but...
You propose a plan and try to get an okay, but I'll be, being honest, is that, uh, you know, the fir, the first thing after, after my father died, everyone rushed and said, "Watch out, Matulowitz, people will be after you." You know, you get a buck or two in your pocket, and people try to get it out of you. Some did, some didn't. Most of the people who were saying they're gonna do that, they're the ones who asked. Then the second thing was, is, "Watch out. Uh, the planning board and the town of Norfolk, there's all these developers, they won't work there, because it's Norfolk and they're planning board." And that's all I kept hearing for, for the last couple of years, and...
I heard, that's one of the reasons why I joined the board. I've only been on the board for a little bit over a year, and I wanted to, to test that theory. I'm relatively new to town, only five years, and I have to say, in my short time here, I've signed a lot of plans, so...
Really? There's no shortage of developers that come in?
I stay a lot of nights here till midnight. I don't think that we're not busy, so...
Well, see, like, for example, the way my father did it with this guy Gage, where they did it on spec, you know, it was a handshake. My old man was old-fashioned, it was a handshake. He, he would sell, he would build the house, he would sell the house, give my old man the money for the land. He can't do that anymore, I'm told. Is that true? I don't know.
I, I, I mean, I think that's, that's beyond certainly my area of expertise, but I, I mean, I agree with what Michelle said. I mean, our bylaws, um, our regulations, uh, you know, I think we've been pretty successful. Uh, I think a, an objective measure of that is the, if you look at property values in the town of Norfolk, I, I would say that, you know, we've done a pretty good job, and that's not necessarily, you know, I'm not referring to the planning, I'm collectively in terms of the, the leadership of the town of Norfolk going back many years. So I, I would say that if you operate within the rules and regulations and the bylaws, um, and in developing the property, do so in a way that preserves, you know, as, as much of the greenery as possible, and be sensitive to those types of details.
As far as I know, there's a snapping turtle or something on this property.
Well, you're gonna have to find out, perhaps, but, yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, there's impact studies and things that...
Okay, because I'm told that when grandfathered, and this is what the Sheppards told me, you got no problem with this, they said.
Even, even back when, um, your father had the, the problem with the planning board, that planning board would have been acceptable for this plan.
Yeah, yeah.
Because a, all they were fighting about was extending the length of the cul-de-sac and not putting a connection through. That's, that's what the, what the big argument was.
The thought that I had before I was old was, number one, is you're gonna develop the property, or you're gonna sell it to an individual. Like I said, the only person who I've talked to is somebody who's a member of my family. But now I have questions while I'm, while I've got you here. For example, let's, I sell it to somebody, I'm trying to pitch the dream to him, saying, "Look, you set up a tee here, put a little, uh, twelfth, twelfth at Augusta, pass the pond, you know, and this, and do, you know, have an underground house, have like a bat cave thing." You know, these were ideas I had when I was gonna make some money, I thought I was gonna get rich with Starbuck and TV back in two thousand and eight, and so I'm figuring out that at the end of the road, no one has to know what I'm doing, but is stuff like that stuff that the planning board has to see here and approve?
If, the, the style of house that you want to put on there or anything? No, no. We only deal with the, how it's planned.
Okay. Development of the property.
Subdivision of property.
Subdivision.
And the road...
So the individual owner, how he takes the property and, you know, converts maybe an underground home for some section under a hill, or this or that, or whatever, he's free to, except I assume the building department is the one who's...
Yeah, they'd be in on it.
On, on top of him, is that correct?
Yeah, and market forces to make it attractive to potential buyers, so, you know, the greatest protection for the town, the greatest protection is the market forces in terms of making it attractive for, for potential buyers, so...
You got a lead, I'll give you a favor.
No, so, so, I mean, you know, I think, you know, Steve, um, you know, I think the board, I think, has given, you know, the gentleman, I think, some pretty good direction in terms of...
I hope, you know, my token of, you know, trying to want to make sure that everything goes smooth with you guys, I just assume everything, you know, I don't need the heat or watch, like, I remember, I went through it with my old man indirectly, you know, watching him plan Solitaire night after night, and I know he's thinking about this, and it's driving him freaking crazy. I didn't need it.
One watch out, and I'll put this out there, because it's been a problem in the past, and we have rules and regulations to protect the town, but in terms of any type of tree clearing, any type of activity, whether you're developing it or you sell it to be developed, um, that is a significant, um, issue for the town in terms of any type of activity without the proper permits and such from the appropriate boards. We've had other developers in the past that have done clear-cutting and such, and that's, that's a good way of creating adversaries within the town.
I wouldn't bet on that, you know why?
And people that are on the boards and committees, those aren't the folks that you want to be your adversaries if you're looking to develop property.
You know why? I've never read Fully versus Matulowitz, that was the other time my father went to the Supreme Judicial Court. They were logging on the property. They pull them logs back, and some guy hits the guys from the phone company, and he whacks his head. Two years and three hundred and sixty-four days later, the deputy sheriff shows up and hands a lawsuit. And the homeowner's attorney goes to the SJC, and because the affidavits aren't written enough, the incompetent attorney, uh, the SJC reversed and sent the case to trial. My old man stood to lose the place if he didn't win in Worcester Superior Court, so I've been through some things with this.
There is, there is one issue that I want to bring to your attention, because you were talking about putting a single house in there. This cannot be a lot.
What do you mean?
Because it's, doesn't have frontage.
I don't understand what you mean by that.
It, it requires a certain amount of frontage. You, you only have the fifty feet of frontage here, and this roadway is as long as it could ever be for a lot. The only way that you can get that made into a lot is to bring it through to the other roadway.
Continue your road. You'd have to build more road.
That's the five-hundred-foot maximum length for a cul-de-sac.
Yeah, and, and you're at like a thousand feet or something.
I'm not grasping exactly what you're saying. If, if I sold it to you, and you wanted to turn it into, with the best of both worlds, you had a nice little estate for yourself, you turned the corner and you had suburban living, I couldn't do it, because it's not a lot.
Well, they wouldn't be able to build on it, because it's not a lot.
You'd have to propose a roadway.
Not a legal lot, yeah.
I mean, even, let's say servants' quarters or, uh, something, but it's something for them, nothing for anyone else.
No, no, you, it would not, it, it could not be designated as a lot. We could not sign an approval-not-required plan for that, because it doesn't have the frontage. It's at the end of a cul-de-sac.
Well, the cul-de-sac, I thought is...
Well, is your cul-de-sac, is, what, twenty, twenty-five feet wide or something? Yeah, yeah.
And so you're saying the roadway ends there?
The roadway ends there. Nothing else can be built beyond the end of the roadway, yeah.
Well, what about...
Selling one lot until it's developed into something different.
So you're saying I can't therefore sell it to a private individual to turn it into his own estate?
You could, absolutely.
You could sell it to him, whether he can get through the boards.
Which bo...
Wait, I mean, there is one piece of property right now.
There is, but it's beyond the five-hundred feet. It's, it's at like a thousand feet. It's a thousand-foot cul-de-sac.
But what he's saying is, can he use all this property as one estate?
Right, it's his own property. I'm using the property, it's what it is, my own property.
Incorporating the house...
Oh, you mean, with, with just his house?
What if I got the house down, put on a different house? What if I put the house on a different hill? I mean, you know, my property.
Sure, yes, sure.
It'd be a dead-end street.
Yes, yes, he would.
Yeah, but you would need to combine the parcels into one large parcel.
Well, it is one right now. It's not separate.
The deed would read all of what I got to you, if, let's say, you're the buyer. That's how the deed would read, you know? He would receive all seventeen point zero five acres.
Right.
To do it as he chose, as he chooses.
But if he ever wanted more than one lot that exists...
Then he'd have to come in front of you guys. One thought that I had, last but not least, what if he wanted to just come in the back way from that, uh, yeah, from here, and just move this out a little bit to, to do a couple of house lots, to maybe, uh, cut, cut the price of what it cost him to buy it in half? Are you guys inclined in that direction?
Probably gonna have to connect it.
Yeah, I, I would rather it be connected myself.
See, that's what you're looking for, is connection.
Yeah, yeah.
At that point, all, all you'd have left would be, you know, this short little bit that wouldn't be connected. It wouldn't, wouldn't make a lot of sense.
I've taken too much of, too many other pieces of time, thank you.
All right, thank, thank you for sharing.
Go visit with Paul, he drew up the plan. He'd be a good guy to talk to.
Yeah.
You're in that guy?
Yeah, he, yeah, he drew it.
I've just, I've been talking to the planning board, so...
Not horrible, is it?
Don't put words in his mouth, Steve.
Yeah. There you go.
A request for a continuance for Nine Shire Drive?
A request for a continuance to the next meeting?
When, when have we decided our next meeting is?
Well, we haven't.
Now, we need...
Oh, do we?
Where?
We haven't, have we?
I missed that then.
Yeah, I missed it too.
When is it then? No, we have...
Walter's meeting by himself.
Right.
Because I'm away the week before that.
Tuesday, October twenty-second?
What happened to our Thursday nights?
I think it was amended at a meeting with the frontage.
Yeah, you put in that.
I definitely cannot do that, but, no, it's just me, but I can't do that.
Well, can you do Thursday night to twenty-fourth?
Yes.
How are you on the twenty-fourth?
Excellent, back to Thursday. All right, I'll go twenty-fourth.
Sorry.
Thursday, ten, twenty-four.
So did somebody make a motion to continue that?
Well, we needed a date first. I'll make a motion that we continue Nine Shire Drive site plan and special permit public hearing, continuance to Thursday, October twenty-fourth at...
Seven forty-five?
Seven forty-five, that's?
Sure.
Seven forty-five.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna be sitting out the next three.
Oh, do you, do we, do we have to open up that hearing?
Is it a new hearing?
It's a new hearing.
Um... It is Nine Shire?
No, but I think about it.
It's the special permit, but...
Special permit, and, and remember, we're reopening the, um...
Yeah, so, so you advertise for that?
Yeah, I did advertise.
If you advertise, yeah, we have to.
Do we? When they request a continuance?
Um, you have to open it, then continue.
Because it has never been opened.
If it's never been opened, we have to open and, and continue.
You remember, this is the whole issue with parking, delineating parking spaces.
All right.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll open up the, uh...
She's gonna get the notice.
Oh, your notice isn't here.
And I will read it, I presume?
Yep.
So Steve, what was the lawsuit? I'll tell you outside of the, the public hearing.
You were chairman, huh?
Yeah, yeah. Review, crank, oh, no. Well, skipping that. Review meeting minutes? Have you got...
Yes, you wanna do that?
Yeah, we're waiting.
There are, uh, minutes here from Tuesday, September tenth, so I would make a motion to accept the minutes of the planning board meeting on Tuesday, September tenth, twenty-thirteen, as, uh, compiled and, and amended by, compiled by Betsy and amended by me.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Was there one for August?
Yeah, that's still in, in preparation.
Oh.
We're, we're close, but next meeting.
We just voted on the minute meetings, uh, meeting minutes.
Just, just go back to the September tenth one?
Yeah.
I wasn't at it. Almost ecstatic.
Oh, that was the one you couldn't make?
Yes, the notice in here, please.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
We have to make one correction on September tenth, as we have it in front of us. Betsy?
Greg wasn't here.
That's what he's saying.
Okay.
Are you sure?
So you're gonna amend your, uh...
Yeah, yeah, not to mention it, you're right.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, as amended, yep.
Okay.
Ready for the public hearing notes?
Yes, please.
All right. Our notice is here by giving that in accordance with the Massachusetts General Law, Section forty-eight, and the Norfolk zoning bylaw, Section F eleven, a public hearing will be 48, and the Norfolk zoning bylaw, Section F-11, a public hearing will be held on Tuesday, August 6th, at 8:30 PM in Room 124 at the Norfolk Town Hall, 1 Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Massachusetts, relative to a site plan application for property located at Nine Shire Drive in Norfolk, Massachusetts. The applicant, WFM Enterprises LLC of Millis, Massachusetts, is proposing construction of a new two-story office building and car storage area with a proponent utilities. The property is located in the C-1 zoning district. Reference successor's map, 18 blocks, 69 lots, 1 through 9, and 41... excuse me, 1-9 and 41-7. Plan and application are available for public inspection in the Office of the Norfolk Planning Board during regular office hours.
All right, does someone make a motion to continue the hearing?
I would like to make a motion to continue the hearing for Nine Shire Drive, site plan and special permit public hearing, to Thursday, October 24th, at 7:45.
Yeah, just a question along those lines. If there's anyone here this evening, should we have a point of, you know, for the record in terms of...
Good point, Jeff.
Well, does anyone have a comment on this particular one? We haven't heard anything about it yet, so...
Nine Shire Drive, Upper 1A.
Okay.
Okay. Second?
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, now we have... We're gonna continue the hearing for 108 Main Street.
Good evening. I'm Jim Pavlik with Outback Engineering.
You need a microphone there.
Good evening, Jim Pavlik.
Is the green light on?
Good evening, I'm Jim Pavlik from Outback Engineering, third try as a chairman. And I'm here representing Mr. Mujee Bahmed, who's the developer of that property. As you may recall, at the last meeting Dover Land Surveying was here, and Mr. Ahmed has asked me to take over the project. And procedurally, I'm also gonna be handling the project for 106 Main, which I know is another public hearing to follow. But this evening, what I was hoping to do was just to introduce myself, let you know that I'm coming on board to represent the two projects. And with that, I'd like to just give you a brief bio on myself. I'm a civil engineer with 27 years' experience in land development projects. I founded... one of the founding members of Outback Engineering back in 1997. And on staff, we have four other professional engineers, two land surveyors, a wetland botanist, and this is the type of projects that we do on a routine basis.
Where are you guys located at?
Out of Middleborough. I actually grew up in Medway. I lived there for a few years in my adult life, up until about 2002. I was on the Medway Planning Board. I used to ride the commuter rail into Boston, so I'm very familiar with the town and the location around here. But you guys probably haven't seen me, you know, in front of this board before.
Just, I guess, a question for the chair. It looks like we're preparing to review some new plans. I see overlook engineering. So, you know, I think we need to understand the documentation and the testimony that we've received for this project in terms of, you know, how that information should be interpreted by this board. I'm a little bit unclear on the circumstances.
Well, I've... basically, I'm inheriting the project from another engineer, and the plans that we have here, it's just a preliminary plan to continue on with the discussion from the prior hearing. Going forward, we're gonna be the engineers of record on the project, so...
So the board...
There's still more work to be done on the plans. Again, I just wanted to introduce myself and let you know that we will be coming back with a definitive set of site plans for further review by the board.
Is there anything different about this than what we've already seen? Anything at all?
Minor changes, yes. There are some minor changes that I wanted to point out and then open it up to the board if, you know, because we're going to be going forward with final site plan design, so if there's additional comments that the board has, I'd like to get your input on it.
Well, just a point, you know, for the chair, a point of consideration, you know, this evening, we don't have our engineering consultant, and we're about to, you know, receive testimony from now a new engineer who's representing the applicant. And I, for one, am concerned about the prospects of that in terms of, you know, what documentation we have and how to manage that situation. I think we need some additional...
Yeah, what documentation do we have? Is this all we're going to see, is just these simple one-page plans? Because we've already seen these.
Okay. Yeah, essentially, that's it. At this point, I haven't had an opportunity to go through all of the comments and update the plans, but our intent was to, you know, just briefly present this, let you know I'm on board, and know that we'll be moving forward on it.
There's something critical that's on this, and this is that at some point, you've gotta demonstrate that you can get that secondary access or egress from the site, the one that comes over to the adjacent property. Yes. Because, you know, without that, this looks like a fairly unsafe project, so you gotta make sure that you get that.
Okay.
Clarification question. Are you saying that essentially, all the plans we've seen so far, we can file and just put them away and start fresh? Is that what you're really saying?
There's gonna be a new set of plans. It's under the same application.
Well, all we've seen so far is...
It's a revision. It's a revision of the prior plans.
Yeah, so we haven't gotten a full set of plans.
We have got a full set. We've had it right on the table here.
We didn't... we never had a full set of detailed plans on this.
I thought Tom prepared...
No, I believe we've had more than that.
Tom prepared comments.
Yeah.
Tom has prepared review and comments.
108 has changed.
Did you have something to say, Bob?
When I reviewed for the first time, saw a project that said it had 54 single-family units, which is a plan we had never seen before when we had our design review board being in that 24th.
Okay.
So it seems that we're seeing a new set of... which is fine, I mean, that's all right. But procedurally, if we are seeing a new set of plans, I don't know, I'm asking.
Ten sheets.
Do we fold this in within the existing hearing, or do we start again?
August 26th.
Well, no, no, this is the same application. They just changed engineers. They pulled their plans and presented new ones.
As I recall, there were only 52 units in the last go, and now it's 54.
We're gonna find out about that. And there are ten... there are ten sheets? You have ten sheets here that you're gonna go over?
No. No, it's just a single sheet. This is a colored version of...
That's what Tom reviewed.
A site plan that has a little more detail on it, but for discussionary purposes, this is just an overview of the two projects, and again, there's much more details. We understand we need to go through full drainage design, septic design, and so on, so...
I think part of the concern that I'm hearing is if there's gonna be a new engineer, and the drawing plans may be changing, does it make sense to forego the application that's in front of us? And when you're ready to start with your new set of drawings, start a new hearing. I don't see really what the downside...
I defer to the chair.
I don't see what the downside of that would be, but...
Is there any necessity for that, Gino?
I don't think there is.
I didn't think so.
Well, it may not be a necessity, but if this board has received testimony, you know, written verbal testimony, and now there's a change in terms of engineering, especially given that our engineer is not here this evening, and he's already begun to comment on prior plans, which the board is in possession of.
Yeah, that's on a prior plan, right?
I agree with Michelle.
Just a fresh start. Seems cleaner, seems...
This board could take action without prejudice to deny the application and encourage the applicant to begin the process properly, so that we're on the same page from the beginning, because as I sit here, now I'm not sure in terms of what testimony we've received and how that testimony should be factored into our deliberation.
Well, we don't have to make a decision on it. They can withdraw their plan that we were looking at, and just come in with a new plan. That... is that a fresh enough start for you, for them to withdraw the plan?
But I don't hear that that's what they wanna do, so...
The applicant would like to speak?
Yes.
We are not withdrawing the old plan. The old plan is still the same, but the only thing is showing the two projects together. Basically, when we opening the 108, he's going to show the only 108 part side. So still, there are two projects, still the same projects, only for the convenience of the explanation for the whole board and the audience, he's just showing the, on one sheet, the whole projects together.
I respectfully disagree. I mean, this already has changed from 26 down to 13, from 54 to 42, to, I mean, every week we come at something different, which is fine, but it seems now that we're changing course of engineer...
Yes.
I guess I would prefer a fresh start.
And this is also the public hearing for 108?
That's right.
Maybe we should just talk about 108 side only.
Should just talk about 108?
Right, because all the comments and all the... that were come in the last meeting, he put it in there, so he's going to explain that, what was gone through before, and what we have improved to go through those concerns, you know?
Well, I think that if there's a difference between this plan and what we've seen before, all I wanna hear about is the differences. Is that acceptable to you guys?
Well, I struggle with that, quite frankly. You know, my preference is to start from the beginning, okay, for this board to receive written and verbal testimony on a project, now that the project has been through a few iterations, and now we've had a change of engineer. And now, our consultant has spent time reviewing the project, which now there's some question in terms of the information that his comments are based on, and I struggle with all of that. And I think that either the applicant should withdraw, and we would be... I personally would be happy to accept that without prejudice and encourage the applicant to reapply, or that the board should consider denying the applicant, and then we can look forward to seeing them in the future.
I mean, they're not ready to present anything further than this today.
No, they aren't. They can just withdraw their plan and come in with a new plan. We don't have to decide. We don't have to deny it. I mean, they can just come back with a...
Unless they refuse to withdraw.
Well, true, true. Unless they refuse to withdraw, because I don't know what the consensus of the board is, but I'm gonna find out. How do you feel about it, Walter?
I think it would be cleaner if they started from scratch.
I've heard you. I've heard you. Even if I wanted to say, I wanna see it. The board has said that they wanna see everything fresh. It's a new... they wanna see the old one withdrawn. If there are changes to it, withdraw the old one and start with a new plan. You've got a new engineer, we just wanna have... we just wanna start things over.
This is an important project for the center of our town, and we're generally supportive of growth and projects such as these. And recently, within the town history, the zoning has changed to allow projects such as these, and we'd like to encourage you to continue. But procedurally, I think we would like to just clean it up, that's all.
I think that's well said by Walter. I think, you know, the board does encourage development of the properties, but I think, I'll speak for myself personally, that, you know, beginning at point A, B, C, et cetera, that works real well for me. We've kinda gone around the horn here a couple times with a few iterations, and now a new engineer, and I struggle with that in terms of my ability to properly vet this project.
Can we just take a break? We can discuss...
See, Peter would like to say something?
Yes.
Assuming that you're gonna take a similar action, since these are kind of joint, they get...
Oh, microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Peter Chipman, applicant abutter to 108, 106 Main Street. Assuming that you'd be taking a similar action, since he's adjoined, I guess our only concern... my concern, and I'm assuming that Mujee would have the same concern on his site, is that if we were to withdraw, would you consider... I mean, these are thousands of dollars of consideration, of which we're making with new engineering, and I understand the clean aspect of it, and we're just trying to react to the abutters and concerns of the board all along. But I guess one of our main concerns of restarting it would be just the notice period, as well as application fees.
Does it have to be re-advertised if they're submitting a different plan?
How long is the period?
If you're withdrawing the old application and starting new, yes, it would be a new hearing that would be...
But if we're completely withdrawing the plans and coming in with new plans under the current application...
But...
We have no problem starting...
The application fee...
Excuse me, I'll speak for myself. I don't have a problem speaking...
Do we have to do the application fee over?
We agree to waive it.
Well...
Well, I mean, if there's advertising costs and such, I mean, those need to be paid.
The hard costs, I don't have any problem paying.
Then that would be fair.
I would be okay with waiving the application fee. Would you guys be okay with waiving the application fee for a second one?
With the exception of any out-of-pocket costs.
Of course, well, yeah, that's natural.
Yes, I would.
Yeah. So the board will waive the application costs?
It's not to be a hardship, it's to make a clean slate.
Yeah.
So how soon we can get on the...
You can get on our next scheduled meeting? Oh, no.
But you have... our next meeting is one, two, three weeks and two days away.
Three weeks away.
Three weeks and two days.
I would need the application by Thursday, this Thursday.
To get onto that meeting?
Get onto the 24th.
I don't know if they're ready for that.
Just one second.
So we're looking to keep the current public hearings open until we resubmit? That would be the modus operandi, I believe?
Well, what's...
If it makes sense.
There's no purpose in doing that.
I don't know.
Can I just discuss with my fellow?
Yep, yeah, you can go right ahead. We'll pause for a couple of minutes, yeah.
By the way, just while we're talking, didn't we agree with these fellows that they would put some roads at the back there?
Yeah, yeah, we did.
Yeah, thank you, yeah. Yeah, it was a nice job.
Thank you, Bob. Yeah, okay.
Bob, I'll take a copy if you have an extra.
Were you talking about the roof? Yeah, that's how I... and get rid of that call the second.
Yeah, although they could legitimately just replace the...
Yes, we are. Unless we... does anyone wanna take about a 10-minute break?
Sounds good to me.
Okay, we're gonna take a 10-minute break.
Require new advertisement. Withdrawing, substituting new plans would not require new advertising. The same hearing could continue. So I guess those would be the options. A middle ground, perhaps, could be continue the hearing, but because it's been delayed a couple of times without new testimony being taken and such, is to still advertise. It's not... wouldn't be required, but as a courtesy to the public, if you wanted an advertisement, that could be a middle ground. But it's not that I'm suggesting that, it's just that would be another option. But I don't think there's an issue with substituting new plans. I mean, we do get new plans during projects, oftentimes, anyway. So this would just be a version of that.
I like the hybrid strategy, I think that Gino articulated, so that...
Just to put out an advertisement, to just overlay them, but put out a new advertisement?
Yeah, and it would be at the applicant's cost, you know, at their expense. But I guess it comes down to protecting, you know, the residents of the town, and protecting this board, and members of this board. So, you know, if those alternatives are comparable, then I accept that. But I think to benefit the residents of the town, and they have another bite at the apple, if you will, you know, we go ahead and advertise, I would feel that much more comfortable with that alternative.
If that's the case, I would suggest that the advertisement include the wording that because new plans are being substituted, notices hereby, provided that the hearing is the same project, the hearing's continuing, but it's based on a new set of plans that have been submitted.
Is that acceptable to you, Michelle?
I'd still prefer the cleaner start, and I'm... I mean, if it's gonna be noticed to the abutters, I see how that protects that. I think from the board's perspective, where it really is, it's not just changing the plan, it's changing the person drawing the plans. I mean, it's a little bit different than just saying, "We're here with the same team, we're just come up with a new concept," as we've heard the last couple of times of presentation. It's really starting from scratch, and I guess I don't see why the hybrid... why not going the full bore, starting from scratch, really doesn't add anything to the process that we're saying.
Okay, Walter?
Can you make a point, sir? The plans have already changed once, so what's the difference?
We've got a new engineer. There's a huge difference. The engineer of record makes a huge difference.
I understand, but the original plans were for duplex houses and four apartment buildings. Now they've changed to single-family.
But we have all brand-new information we'll have to review when it's a new set of plans.
I understand, but why are you having such a difficult time here? They already changed the plans once, now they wanna change them again?
And that's what we're working out. Some people want them to start from scratch, others think that we should just continue. We're just getting through it.
The distinction between the two options are, it seems to me, is one of time. With a modest amount of cost for advertising, I mean, that's not really a determining factor one way or the other. But if one were to submit these plans and withdraw the others within the existing process that we have open, and the public hearing that we have open, then presumably, they would show up our next meeting on October, what do we say, 24th, with the new set of plans, and we would, for the first time, see them. Or maybe we'd see them a little sooner, but...
And our professionals will already have looked at them.
Yes, hopefully, if there's enough time, when they submit, and between then and the meeting on the 24th. The other alternative is to withdraw the application and start fresh. And as I understand, the timing that Betsy has described, it's not possible for them to make the meeting on the 24th.
Could squeak by, but...
Could squeak by, but they... well, let me ask you, can you have the plans in Betsy's hands in time to allow her to advertise for a brand-new public hearing, such that we could have it on the 24th? I'm hearing whispers that you couldn't do it, and shaking your head, no, you couldn't do it. So that's the difference, I think, between the two, which means that the first time we would get a chance to talk to them in a public hearing would be at the following meeting, which is two weeks or three weeks hence.
Let me ask you this. What's the difference between when we've opened a public hearing with documents that were presented to Betsy, and then they come to the meeting two, three weeks later, and the documents being presented to us are completely different than what's been presented to Betsy? Isn't that what's been happening? I mean, to say that they present... he might give one document on Thursday to get the application in, and come on the 24th with a complete set of drawings for us to review, or a week before that he gets over to our engineering. I don't see the difference.
Well, here's another... not really a hybrid suggestion, but another suggestion that may work. What if the application, but not the plans, were submitted by Thursday with the caveat that the plans would have to be submitted by the time the advertisement appears, and that advertisement could appear as late as the following Thursday? Would you have that... Would you have, would you be able to have the plans a week from Thursday?
Final plans?
Normally, normally we require two weeks before the hearing anyway. That's what that would be. That Thursday would be two weeks before the 24th?
Realistically, I think I'm looking at a two-to-three-week window to have revised plans ready to resubmit, so...
So there wouldn't be time to review, for Tom and I to review them anyway, by the 24th, it sounds like?
Right.
Would or would not?
Would not.
Right.
No.
Even if it was just a continuation of today's?
Right.
Right.
I mean, I guess, you know, one comment, and maybe, you know, beginning to lean in Michelle's direction here, is that, you know, maybe the 80/20 rule applies. I mean, you should be, you know, maybe 80% through the process before asking, you know, this board for a public hearing. You know, it sounds like you have substantial work to do, and I'm not sure that that's the right way, you know, for you to approach the project where, you know, you're, you know, trying to get all this work done, you're driving towards a date, and we continue to have this circular process here where, you know, we've had fits and starts, and we don't want to do that. We want you to have all the information that you need and that we need in terms of elevations, et cetera. So, you know, maybe you need to be a little bit further along in terms of your engineering in order for us to have confidence that you're going to be prepared to satisfy the requirements of the board.
Well, I like the hybrid, myself. Looks like we've got about four different ways of looking at this. I like the hybrid, but if they need more time, give them more time. But can we narrow this down so that we can vote on something? I like the hybrid. Does anyone else have any preference towards the hybrid? No, I guess.
I'm, no, I'm leading toward, at this point, given the work that he needs to do and the time it'll take him to do it, to withdraw and start again.
I know what you, I know that you, and you. It looks to me as though the board wants you to withdraw and start again. And we will waive the application fees.
With the exception of the advertising.
Right, the exception of the advertising. Now, are there any comments?
When will we get the first hearing?
We'll get it...
We could set our next meeting after that.
We could set our next meeting after that if you want us to.
Well, you know, we're already talking about now having the project on the agenda, knowing that there's substantial work to be done. Maybe the planning board should get an update in terms of, you know, your readiness at our next meeting, and then put it on the agenda. I'm just not, I don't want to continue in this mode where we have these dates and we're waiting till the last minute, wondering, you know, whether you're going to request a continuation, whether you're going to have the information.
We're going to do it clean, we're going to do it clean. We're going to schedule it now, that's...
Well, don't schedule it too soon, is...
No, well, that's what I'm asking. What is, what's the next date that we can possibly do it after October 24th?
Probably two weeks after that, right?
Most likely, yeah.
Two weeks would be Thursday the 7th or Tuesday the 12th?
Thursday the 7th. Does anyone have any, any problem with that date? How's that sound for you?
I'm okay with that.
November 7th?
That works for me. Working backwards, what's the date we'd have to have plans submitted by?
They need four or five days, right? Gino, when you look at the plans?
Yes.
Four or five days at least.
One week before the 7th is October 31st, Halloween.
Yeah, I would plan on a week before.
October 31st, and October 31st is one, two...
I would at least see the application and all the information, like, three weeks before for advertising.
That's October 17th, which is one, two, and two weeks and two days from today.
What did we say, the 7th?
Mm-hmm. So one, two, three. You need a three-weeks, Betsy?
You can get me the application next week, right? I believe the application for advertising, so I can get that done before I go away.
What's that? Yeah, they have to write down, draw something.
Question by the town, though.
Yes, go ahead. Could you identify yourself?
Peter Diamond, 114 Main Street.
Who's got the microphone? Who's got the microphone?
Jim does.
Peter Diamond, 114 Main Street. My question is, this advertising you're speaking of, is this a new notice to the abutters also?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
So procedurally, does the chair believe it'd be appropriate to request the withdrawal in writing prior to this board establishing the date for a public hearing?
You will have to request the withdrawal. You'll have to request a withdrawal of the existing plans.
We can accept a handwritten note or something like that, but I think before we put that public hearing on our agenda, we should have something which is, constitutes the withdrawal.
Well, I think we can give them a little time to provide the documentation for the withdrawal, but it will be understood that if we don't get a withdrawal of the existing plans, then it won't go forward. Yes?
I just want to make sure the applicants know that we did have a meeting with the applicant, and we did supply comments, and those comments will affect the orientation of the buildings, and I think they should have a copy of that before they start revising their drawings.
Do we have a copy of it?
You do.
Oh, oh, is this in there?
In our package, yeah. So I just want to make sure that everyone knows that we had some comments, otherwise...
No, that's for the seller.
No, we don't have any.
Not like, yeah.
We got an email.
Yeah, no, I did see it.
It was an email, yeah.
Oh, Bob's got one right here. Do you have any other copies of this?
I don't.
Okay. Could you send a copy of this out to the two applicants?
Yes.
All right.
Should we mention the drives? Because the drive configuration...
Oh, I don't know.
I mean, there are a number of other things that the board has raised in terms of questions and recommendations, and just from a distance, it doesn't appear as though they're reflected in that plan. So I don't want this to become a lengthy discussion because you're withdrawing your plan, but I would say there are some things that you would want to take into consideration because I think they're going to probably survive this process in terms of recommendations and concerns.
If there's any guidance on that you can give me now, I'd love to hear it, so we can present something at the next meeting that you're looking for.
Well, we had requested some sort of a loop for the 106, yeah, over there, and to absolutely make sure that you can get that connection to the adjacent property. That is town property, so you'd have to get something from the town.
You probably can't see it, but what we were looking to propose was a Grass Creek-type surface over the septic system.
Oh, okay, I know what you're talking about, yeah.
So it would look like lawn, but it's a reinforced turf, if you will.
Similarly along the back as well?
Yes, all the way out to the cul-de-sac.
I guess the other point that Walter, Walter had asked the question about connectivity from the cul-de-sac back to that, the end of those two branches.
Same.
So, once again, I really don't want to go into too much detail, but given that these are macro issues and opportunities, and that doesn't mean that the board wouldn't move off of those ideas, but I would think that you would benefit from hearing that information this evening.
I appreciate that.
Yes?
I think he has 11 by 17, maybe just the board, if we can spend few minutes on that 11 by 17 plan by looking closely. I think we tried to accommodate all those issues that we have, so that Jim, when he goes for a fresh start, you have all the comments and everything, so I just don't want to spend another thousands of dollars and all those issues, you know?
Well, what types of things are you talking about? Because he just described the linkages that he had on the backs of those, and I think that most people, do you agree with the way they had done it?
Yeah, I mean, I would...
Grass Creek, you've seen it, right?
I would just say, you know, until the layout, you know, is in place and, you know, you can see the impact in terms of the structures and such, it's kind of difficult. I mean, I certainly wouldn't want to be held to that, that standard without seeing the full, the full plan, but, but I agree with Steve and Walter, that was conceptual.
How about you, Michelle? Do you agree with that?
Yeah, I think conceptually as well. I mean, each iteration of design that we've seen, there's been some various comments, which I think has enhanced the plan each time that we've seen it. And so your purposes may be helpful to even go back and view past planning board meetings that we've had to sort of accumulate all the various comments, because, you know, it's been a difficult process, it's been a good process, but it does feel like, you know, we've come, received comments, responded to them, there's more comments, respond to them, so they're layered upon one another. I think it's a little difficult to sit here and count the progress and how it's evolved.
Is there any other particular subject that you were talking about? I mean, that's one thing.
Yeah, I think to ask us to say, are there going to be any more changes, or can we say this is going to be it, I don't think is possible for us.
No, 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 no. He said he wanted to bring up a couple of issues to make sure that they're okay with us, so that he doesn't have to go back and redesign.
The other primary things that we've shown on here is a proposed fence along the railroad and this commercial property.
And also, yeah, along...
Row of arborvitaries along the abutters properties.
And a fence there as well, I think that was agreed to previously.
Okay, fence also, that's fine. And then, again, this affects 106, but we were looking to propose that gravel emergency access out to the existing old town hall.
Well, it affects both, it affects both, 108 and 106.
Steve, in terms of guidance on that emergency access to the town property, what steps do they need to take aside from drawing it on a piece of paper?
They have to get the approval from the appropriate person in town that would say that they would grant it.
Right.
The ability to cross the land.
And who would that be? Would that be Jack, or would that be...
They could start with Jack, but it may have to be the board.
Town and board strater.
Also...
Yeah, Jack Hathaway.
In the, in the starting fresh, we wouldn't need the 106, 108 Main Street definitive subdivision anymore, would we? Because the decision is to not go forward with it as a public road, and therefore it's more clean, it's just 106 and just 108, so we could eliminate one piece of the pie here. Is that correct?
Didn't they withdraw that last?
No, no.
Oh, they didn't, okay.
So that might be nicer, too, to tidy it up. One thing that's been difficult, as I understand, is two owners and two applicants, but the project really needs to be looked at as a comprehensive whole, because it's too complicated...
Can it be combined like that? Two separate pieces of property and two owners?
Well, it can be, it can be considered simultaneously. I would think it makes sense to do that, but procedurally would be two separate projects, two separate decisions.
There are two separate owners, two separate applicants, and, you know, we are looking at the engineering technical issues comprehensively as one, and that's why we're showing it on the one-site plan.
We can hold it as a single hearing instead of three separate hearings.
But does it have to be applied for that way?
It's two distinct applicants.
I know the applicants, that's not the question I'm asking, please, it's the hearing.
It would technically be two hearings held simultaneously.
And you can do that?
Yeah.
Does that have to be requested at the time of the application, or is that our decision?
That's your decision. I mean, it makes it more convenient for everybody, really, including the abutters and the public.
I think the real question will come into play when the question of wastewater, in terms of whether this is two projects or, in essence, really, one project, in terms of the threshold, the 10,000-gallon threshold. So that'll be for the Board of Health to decide.
All right, under Title V, there's two distinct, separate ownerships, so each property would have its own ability to achieve up to 10,000 gallons per day.
But I think the fact that there's a shared, a common access road...
Under Title V, it would, respectfully, I would just indicate that, from my experience, that there's two separate projects.
That's not this board, anyway, so...
Sure.
Okay, I think that we've carried this about as far as we can carry it. Do we have any comments from the public that they may want to make on this? Yes, if you can identify yourself, there's a microphone?
Paul Colby, 105 Main Street. If we're looking at those things that have been layered on over these things, one of the issues that I just want to make sure we talk about is density, that we had concerns about the density of that project. I just want to reiterate that, that's one of the, one of the abutters' concerns. My other point is a question, actually, if that emergency exit, how do you protect that perpetuity? You know, with the town, whatever the town's going to do, would they have to get a right-of-way that actually protects that?
They would have to have an easement across it.
Which then restricts that property from the town.
Well, it, it just has to, whoever goes in there just has to make sure that they maintain the easement. It's only an emergency access. They just have to make sure that they maintain the easement if someone else develops it. Are we all done? Did we decide on the, what's that?
We don't have to take any action.
No, no. But we do have to continue the hearing? No, no, we don't continue the hearing because it's not going to be a continuation, but we did pick a date that we're going to schedule for the first date?
Mm-hmm, the 7th of November.
7th of November. At what time?
I have no problem with that contingent on the board receiving the withdrawal, the formal withdrawal.
Yeah.
Right. I'd say 7:45, it's on the agenda.
7:45, okay.
We have to continue it until we get the withdrawal?
We do have to close it?
Close it?
I would suggest it should be continued, and we will, when we simultaneously resubmit, at that point, would look to withdraw.
Well, that's true. We could always just deny it if we don't get everything that we want.
And why, what's, what's the advantage for you to do that as opposed to withdraw? I mean, because we could just deny the project right now.
No, I think what he's saying is they, they plan to withdraw, but they have not withdrawn yet, so the hearing should be continued until...
Till that paperwork's received.
Till the paperwork's received, yeah.
Because otherwise, it's open-ended right now.
Okay, so that's action we can take at our meeting on 10/24. We'll be in receipt.
Well, we could, we could take action tonight. Steve was willing to accept a handwritten withdrawal here as a piece of paper.
We have to take some action tonight at the hearing, we have an open hearing. We have to either continue it, close it, deny it, whatever.
Withdrawal of your application, I think, is what, yeah, which face...
I think we continue it to the 24th, but then they should have the application in for the new, and at that time also have the, to withdraw this one. Continue it until the 24th. If we receive the withdrawal of it, then that's off our schedule.
And at that time, it can be put, that can be put on the agenda for the 7th, after we've received your withdrawal. Take that action, this board, at the next meeting, and then we can put the public hearing on for November 7th, if that's agreeable to the chair.
Yeah, that's good. Does someone want to make a motion to that effect?
Just one.
She said advertise.
Yeah.
Well, the second...
Yeah, this is going to be...
If you wait till the 24th, it won't be time to advertise for the 7th.
That's right. That's right.
Well, I would assume that... Do we have to withdraw one?
It's only two weeks.
Do we have to withdraw one before we can advertise the new one? No, so we can already start advertising for the new one?
Yes, yes, you could, but, but under that motion, you weren't going to, you weren't going to schedule it until you got the withdrawal on the 24th.
Oh, oh, okay.
So if you wait until then to do it, you can't advertise for the 7th, because it's exactly two weeks. You know, the advertisement would have to be in that, earlier that night, that day.
All right. Well, I didn't hear a motion. I think that he was saying that this is what we should do.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
You know, as them starting a brand-new public hearing, they don't need our permission to do that tonight. They, as long as they're into Betsy by Thursday, they can come and make that requirement. They don't need our permission to do that. So really, the only thing we have to act on tonight is the open public hearing that we have. That's all our decision is tonight. You know, they can go to Betsy outside of this meeting and be on that agenda for November 7th. We've set a meeting for November 7th, and they don't need, we don't need us to move on that.
Yeah, but, but the idea of keeping it open until all the documentation is with Betsy, that works for me. We can always just close it on the 24th.
And then it can still be its own clean, discreet.
Right.
Item on the 24th. We can still take up that, that action item. You can choose to vote to have, see them on the 7th or not. They can still submit their application. They have the right to do that, so.
So do we have a motion?
Yes. So I would move to continue the public hearing for 108 Main Street until October 24th at 7:32.
All right. Do we, now, there's no other action that has to go in there.
There is an action on the 24th, but it's at 7:45.
All right, yeah. Do we have a second on that?
Not for me.
Not from you, huh? Jeff? Well, let's see. Well, I'll second it. Let's see if we get the votes. All those in favor?
But let's, let's discuss it a little further. What's the?
Well, all right, my, my thought is that if they're going to withdraw, they ought to withdraw tonight. It's cleaner, it, it just makes everything happen in sequence a lot better. They've agreed they want to do it, let's do it. You said you'll accept.
I agree.
You said you accept a handwritten note, take a piece of paper, write it out, sign it, hand it to you, withdraw, and then we can proceed.
Well, we can move the meeting from the 7th to the next Tuesday or something, to provide the two weeks.
So that, that's, that's why I didn't second the motion, Michelle.
I just, you know, my counsel to the board is, you know, we can't continue to do things out of order. We need to get into a sequential mode here with this project.
The way I'm doing it is that we've, you know, we're trying to get a clean start, absolutely fresh start. So we still have something open in front of us right now that we want to get to a point of closure, so we can completely close it, wrap it up, and then start something completely fresh. The starting of something completely fresh does not require our vote as a board, does not require our endorsement as a board. It's just there, a public applicant who can come in and make that request to Betsy outside of any discussion that we had tonight, which they plan on doing. The other piece, which is us tidying up, the piece we want to close out, is still going to happen. So I, that's why I'm saying if it takes another meeting to tidy that up, I'd like to have something a little bit more professional and proper on record than a handwritten note, and I don't see any reason why we can't withdraw it on the 24th. It's still prior to a new application and.
Okay, the, the only way that we can, we can continue this hearing is, we have to have three votes. We don't have three votes. We've got a split board on this. So, half of the, the board would require you to withdraw your existing plan tonight. You understand that, too, right? And?
Or prior to agreeing to a public hearing, setting a date for the public hearing, basically.
Well, if, if they, if we don't set it tonight, then we won't set it until the next meeting.
Correct.
Which is the 24th, which will push it out another.
We don't have to do that. We don't take a vote on that. They can come and apply for a public hearing without us voting on that, guys.
Are we getting on the same?
And be on November 7th. We have a meeting set for November 7th. They don't need us to vote on that tonight.
I personally would like to see the withdrawal before agreeing to move forward with a, a new public hearing for the project. So if you want to move the date from the 7th to the following week to provide two weeks, so we can take the formal action at the next board meeting.
Or they can write that up tonight. I'm not opposed to writing it up tonight, if it keeps it going.
Well, we've already set the 7th. And, and no one wants, so we don't have the votes to continue this hearing. Is that correct? So Gina, what happens to this hearing if there's no vote to continue it?
Good question. Then it ends, the hearing's closed, and you have to render a decision.
So basically, the project will get denied.
The whole issue of the denial.
Without prejudice.
Yeah.
And that's, that's an option, so maybe that's what needs to be done.
Well, they, I think the only way we're going to get beyond this impasse is to, to vote on that, is to close the hearing. So, does somebody want to make a motion on that?
Make a motion to close the public hearing for 108 Main Street?
Second?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. No?
I said aye.
Oh, you did. Okay. It's closed.
Okay.
So, have everything ready for the 7th.
We're looking to, after hearing all the deliberations, I think we'd like to, if it's still possible, I'm not sure if we'd like to redo it, revise your decision, but we'd like to withdraw without prejudice.
We voted.
It's closed.
So that being the case, then we have to take the final action on the project.
Right. We will have a decision. Now, we have to do the same thing with 106, 108 Main Street and 106 Main Street.
Maybe they're willing to withdraw those.
Are you calling the hearing?
I am calling the 106, 108 Main Street here.
Peter Chipman, I'm the applicant on 106, 108 subdivision roadway hearing. I am willing to withdraw without prejudice. That was planned long before we even had this hearing tonight. So, if you would accept that, I will gladly put it in writing to you tonight.
Okay, that's, was that 106, 108, or just 106?
It's 106, 108 subdivision roadway, which we always intended to move.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, with that.
Okay.
Then I'll, I'll give you a handwritten note tonight.
All right, that's good. Thanks. Do you agree with that?
He's not the applicant.
I'm the applicant.
There's only one applicant on the 106, 108?
I have an easement.
Oh, okay.
It allows me.
Need to take a vote to accept the withdrawal without prejudice.
Yep. So, do we have a motion to accept Peter Chipman's withdrawal?
Is there any comment on that?
Uh, it, yes, if you have a comment.
Yes, please.
Need a microphone?
Microphone, please.
Before you close. Was that on the 106, 108 Main Street? I just want to ask, when closing this out and him withdrawing from the proposal, does that mean the public road will not happen for the project?
They had already removed.
Or no consideration in the future?
They're going to still have a road, it's just not going to be a public road, it would be a private driveway.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Was there a motion?
So moved.
Okay. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. We're going to open 106 Main Street for the site plan. Is, is this another one that you're going to?
Peter Chipman, applicant, 106 Main Street. I would like to withdraw without prejudice with the caveat that you agreed to waive the application fees, accepting out-of-pocket expenses for advertising and mailing.
I think that would be.
Put that in writing tonight, too.
Yep.
Okay, do I have a motion on that?
We want to ask any more comments from the.
Oh, are there any other comments from the public? Okay, does someone want to make a motion for that?
So moved. You could read it back if you wish.
Second?
Betsy?
I'm sorry, I missed it.
Oh, okay.
I'll make the motion to, you know, that the applicant be allowed to withdraw without prejudice, the project, 106 Main Street.
Waive the application fee?
With the waiver of the application street.
With the exception of.
And the mailings.
With the exception of advertise, or out-of-pocket cost.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, second?
Yes, second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Well, thanks for coming.
Now, as I understand it, all the Butters will be notified for the next.
There'll be a new notification, yep.
Thank you.
Can we take the microphone?
Ah, the last.
Just as you close that up, make sure that the applicants get to design and work on inside.
Yes. She has a copy which she will send to each of them.
Thank you, Bob.
Okay, Mr. Butters.
Yeah, my, my name's Paul Butters. I live on Kingsbury Road.
Should we wait for Peter? I mean, Peter is not, presumably he's not using his software.
No, he's.
We got, we got a call.
Yeah, we can fill him in. Okay, go right ahead.
The reason I'm here is, last June, I sent up correspondence to the board, and what I asked for was something in writing explaining, once an earth removal permit is issued, how it's tracked, how it's monitored, how do you know whether an applicant, if they're allowed to remove a 1,000 cubic yards, have they done it, have they exceeded it, especially in the case where a permit has, has been renewed several times. So, that was the gist of it. I never received any response back from the board. I did send.
Well, I sent you, I sent you a couple.
Well, just recently, I got a, after inquiring in August, and then again, it's last month, in September, via email, I did get a response that a consultant was assisting the board in formulating a response to my, my question, so.
And that we requested the developer to provide his logs?
Yes, but the bigger question is, I wanted to know if you have any policy, if you will, for how do you, anytime you issue an earth removal permit, do you just take the permit, the person that applies for the permit, their, their word for, you know, that they're complying with the determines and conditions, or do you wait until there's a complaint, if you will, before you do anything?
Well, I, this is a fairly old subdivision, relatively old. It, it precedes our new earth removal policy that we have. We had gone in, they used, it, earth removal is handled now by the planning board. There used to be a separate, independent committee that did earth removals, earth removal permits. You know, we would send a member, board a select man, conservation, you know, it was just one of those grouped committees. So, there, we, we would not go back and review the earth removal permits that were really written by this other committee. But, we have gone up and looked, and, and I didn't read the original document, and I spoke to Tom Houston, and Tom Houston had gone back and read the, the original document. He went with the, with the, with the site plan, and he had determined that in one location or two, that there was, there was an excess of soil taken out. A lot of it looked like it was supposed to look, but it does seem as though there's active.
Stockpiling.
Stockpiling on at least one of the parcels. And it almost even appears as if they're selling loam off of that site.
Well, there's a sign out there that says there's loam to sale.
Yeah. So, we, we have asked them for their logs. Have we received anything, Betsy?
Um, no, we have not.
We may want to remind them before we have his, we may be able to pull his earth removal permit.
His site contractor, Mike.
Yes.
The developer and contractor up there, too. We will supply.
Need a microphone?
Microphone, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
My name's Michael DiNapoli. I'm president of Maple Sands, and I'm also the contractor up there. Most of the material that's been used on the site is, is used on-site. I mean, Paul could probably tell you that there isn't a massive amount of trucks going up and down Miller Street or through the subdivision. There's some from other subdivisions behind us using our roads, if that's what Paul is talking about. But most of the stuff has been used within the Sandy Knoll subdivision. We have Title V septic sand, that some of the lots need septic gravel, and that's where it's going. I mean, we are stockpiling some loam in there from the subdivision. As everybody knows, and Paul probably knows, he lived down there long enough, that was an old gravel pit. There was no topsoil, there was no nothing there. We're screening topsoil right now behind Paul's house, which is an inconvenience for him, but we're, we're going to need it for the Norfolk lots. My partner, Bill, is in touch with the Board of Health for re, for re-perking them lots. We have to re-perk them, because the lots, the subdivision is old and the perks ran out. So we're prepping the area now to get them so they're buildable and perkable, because years ago, with the big cuts through there, some of the cuts were 20, 30 feet. I mean, you can't put a house on top of a, an antill and build a house and have a swimming pool in it. So we have to level out all the property, and that's what we're doing right now.
Well, there were a couple of lots that I distinctly remember. They, they had a steep enough driveway that it required a French drain at the bottom of the driveway. Those hills don't appear to be there anymore.
You mean going down into an area, or uphill?
Down towards the roadway.
No, that, that's all conservation. Coming in from Miller Street, the left side is conservation, the right side is.
I'm talking about the right-hand side.
Yes. That's all just about natural ground there. The big cut was really behind Paul's house. There's still a mountain of gravel there.
I'll put back and look at the decision, but I, I distinctly remember there being something about French drains at the bottom of the driveway to slow down the water coming down the driveway. So I think those houses were supposed to be elevated.
I honestly don't, I'm being honest, I don't remember that. I don't think we submitted anything for that.
You were on the board at that time, weren't you? Don't remember?
I don't either.
Well, that's part of what I think the problem is here. This, this thing has gone on for so long, there's a disconnect here. These things have been issued and reissued, and no one's put, connected the dots. What, what was the intended purpose out there, and what's actually happening right now, in actual way it seems to be?
Does the building permit process connect the dots?
We, we never submitted any, any individual lot, you know, proposals for homes or anything.
Well, isn't that another thing, if there's no building permit out for the site or for a lot, that you, isn't there some sort of end date to this? I mean, because I'd actually like to see houses out there, because, because this is just, this has gone on for about 15 years. I think when this, I'm sorry, when this site was first proposed, I think Dan Winslow was on the planning board, that's how far.
Really?
While he was involved in it. I mean, that's how far that was going. And there's no sign of any houses being built.
That they're within their extensions to.
Yeah, they, yeah.
I'm not opposed to houses. I just don't, I, I think I have a right to know how long is, is site work going to go on. It hasn't even been a building permit taken out. You can't, how, how long can you milk this? And, you know, I don't blame them for trying to make some money on whatever they do.
I'm not making money. I'm not making money.
Well, let me give you one explanation before.
They're not moving, they're not, they're not moving this stuff away.
I have room in two other places, too.
There's something else that's involved here, and there were extensions as a result of the downturn in the economy.
Right.
And those have not expired yet. And those weren't issued by us.
Yeah.
Is it state or was that federal?
State.
That was state. The state of Massachusetts extended all these. So, has nothing to do with us.
What did they extend?
All permits.
All the permits.
So they've not been.
Subdivision.
With subdivisions.
So when you were asking, how long do they have, you know, there is, there is definitive periods in which time they have to develop the, the property, but that's been extended over the years by the state, and so they're within still. They have not exceeded their extensions.
Well, it just seems to me that.
What is the final date on that?
We said 15, 17.
Yeah. Goes out of.
It won't last that long. I promise you, Paul. It won't last that long. I mean, I've, I've been carrying this for 10 years. I mean, it's killing me. I'm not making money off it, believe me.
Well, my most recent communication was, you know, the pile that's right up behind my house. When I was here in June, I referred to it as a hill, and the owner said, it's, it's been there forever. Well, it hasn't. It's, it's a stockpile of, it's a man-made hill, and it's just been sitting there. There's trees growing out of it. When I sent an email, it was September 19th, I was home that day, and the, the house was shaking, all the furniture shaking, the dishes, and it, at some point, you know, you say in 2017, come on, really.
We have no control over.
This has been under development for 15 years, and nothing's happened out there, except it seems to be, you know, a staging area for heavy equipment, stockpiling of earth.
And it's being moved from there over to Frank.
And it's being moved from there over to Franklin Line where there are houses being built, so. I think more than 1,000 cubic, I think it says 980 cubic yards of, of soil fill can be, stuff's going out of there all the time. Who's kidding, oh, really?
When can we expect the, uh, logs? I guess that would be, when can we expect to receive the logs?
To see lots?
Logs.
Logs.
Logs. I'll, I'll get them to you, uh, the end of the week, I'll get them to you.
We're closed on Friday. They have to be there by Thursday.
Friday.
Yeah.
Town Hall is.
All right, well, first of the week then. I'll get it to you the first, I'll get it to Betsy the first of the week.
Can I just make one more? When I was here in, in June, listening to two of the applicants for different things in front of the board, there was a whole long list of criteria from everything, even the decibel levels on an air conditioning unit that was gonna be in a commercial building down off of 150. Everything could be measured. The only thing that doesn't, and you have a way of measuring it. The only thing that's not being measured is how much earth and, and, and sand and gravel is being taken out of one of these, uh, developments. It's like an honor system. Well, there's not an honor system for everything else. How come it's up to the permit holder to decide when he's complied with? I don't, I think there's something wrong.
How many houses are there left to be built besides what's in Norfolk?
In Norfolk? In the Norfolk subdivision?
Well, both sides.
Both sides is probably eight.
And where are, where else are you stockpiling?
Um, I got a project going on Long Hill Road in Franklin. I have loom and stockpile.
Well, I, I hope you're not stockpiling things for those subdivisions.
No, I stockpile some material there too. I have loom there that has been screened that I also sell. I have a farm in Bellingham that I have loom on that I also sell. I mean, honestly, going on that area over there, I gave most of the loom to the neighbors and I sold, and that's the truth. I mean, we screen in the loom down behind Paul's house and up on the top of the hill, and it goes into the lots. We strip a lot, we bring the loom down, we stockpile it, we screen it, we bring it back to the lot when it's finished. I mean, that's the way it goes. I mean, and even the, if you look at the site plan, on the Norfolk Franklin Line, there was almost a 22-foot fill there with sloping, so that's a lot of material going in there. It's on the Franklin, if you look at the site plan, there's a 22-foot fill right there with a box culvert. I mean, that's a lot of material to move.
Well, we would like to know when that stockpiling is gonna end.
When it's what?
Going to end.
Oh, okay. Well, as soon as we start building the lots, we have to screen some loom for the Norfolk site too, because it was an old gravel pit. I mean, what are we gonna do with the loom? Give it away?
Well, are those, are those big piles, is that all loom or is it just?
Well, no, there's, the original gravel is underneath. If you look at the plan too, there's a slopeisman that was on the approval of the subdivision that ran into the house lots, 'cause the bankings were so high. And like I say, you can't put a house on top of them. We perked the land originally because we wanted to make sure it was buildable. There's no sewer, so you gotta perk it to make sure it's, it's buildable. You can't, if it was clay, there's no sense going ahead with the subdivision, 'cause there's no sewer down there. So, now that we leveled out the property, we have to reperk it again. The perks ran out, and my partner, Bill, has been in touch with the board of health, and we're gonna perk it in the fall.
If, if you go back through the record, you'll see that when this whole thing started years and years ago, the original proposal was to take hundreds of thousands of cubic yards of sand out of, out of that, just flatten everything. The neighbors up there, including myself, were, were opposed to that because we thought we'd never see a house built up there in our lifetime, because this was gonna be an active sand and gravel pit for the rest, from now until doomsday. So, a limit was put on the amount that could be taken off that site, and the rest had to be graded to, to, so, so it was buildable. Well, I think, I know that that was the intent, and it's drifted way, far away from that. You know, it's turned into what the restrictions that were put on that piece of property were meant to prevent, and no one's overseeing any of this. That's just my perception. I don't mean to be critical. I know you volunteer your time and all that. And it has, it has a lot of impact on people, well, at least me. When diesel exhaust is coming into the house, when all the dishes and furniture, and it's, I, there's, there's no end in sight, that's.
Any of you guys wanna go up there and check it out?
That'd be a good idea. I think that'd be a great idea.
Do you wanna go up there and check it out?
I'll go up there.
I'll go with you.
All right. We'll, we'll set a date.
We'll do a site.
That's the way we're gonna leave. We're gonna go up ourselves.
Okay.
And we're gonna, uh, we're gonna check. We'll probably bring a plan with us to see.
Yeah, let's review the site plan.
Would it be helpful if these gentlemen who are available when we can? What's that? Would it be helpful if they're available when we can?
Well, if.
Yeah, I think we'll work through Betsy rather than tonight.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll, we'll have Betsy let them know when we decide to go.
That'd be great. I'd like to do that.
All right.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any preference on what you might like as a reading?
I don't know.
Yeah, probably.
Do we have a, uh?
Early, early.
Yeah, I'd like to include Tom, um, Tom Houston.
Yeah, yeah. He's already familiarized himself with the whole site. He's already been up there.
Yeah, he looked at it once.
Well, I asked him to go up there a couple of weeks to check it out.
Again?
Yeah.
'Cause I knew he reviewed the plans.
So, when do we wanna do it? Do we wanna do it this Saturday?
The 5th?
I can do it.
I can do it the 5th.
Yeah? How about you, Peter? You okay? Michelle?
It just has to be early for me, early in the morning.
It'll be early. We'll make it early.
What's early?
Soon as the sun comes up.
You bring the coffee.
I've got a busy day, so I gotta get it.
All right.
When does your busy day start?
Oh, I'm not that, you, six in the morning.
You mean like, like a work day?
No, work day is up for even earlier. That's my sleep-in time.
So, what, what time would you like? Would you like it at like 7:30 or?
8:30, yeah.
How about 8 o'clock?
What time's the sun up these days? Is it up by 8:30?
It's up, it's up at that time.
Didn't get savings yet?
8 o'clock, 8 o'clock.
Yeah, where's the rendezvous point?
On the street.
8 o'clock.
What street is that, Betsy? 'Cause we just refer to it as Saint.
Fox.
Yeah, that's right.
What is it?
What's it?
Silver Fox.
No, no.
Oh, that's right, okay. 'Cause I go in the.
8 a.m.
Silver Fox, huh?
Silver Fox.
So, if I go to my, um, GPS, type in Silver Fox, I'll get there?
It'll bring you to your house.
Yeah.
Is he the Silver Fox? Yeah, geez. Is he the Silver Fox? Oh, man.
Can we see if Tom's available to join us?
Yeah, I think that's important.
Yeah, we will. Betsy, could you send an email to Tom?
Yeah, I'll, I'll call him tomorrow.
Yeah. All right. That's it?
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, yes.
Could I have just a moment of your time?
Sure.
Uh, referring back to the 108 Main Street decision, uh, closing of the hearing.
Mm-hmm.
Stepped into this project, kind of cold, so trying to figure out the procedures of the board at this point. Um, so procedurally, the timeframes that we were talking about previously, um, is that still doable if we get the application in?
Absolutely. Yeah.
Is the board gonna make a decision tonight on that, or?
No. Gino will write a decision for us and we'll review it.
It'll be an easy one to write.
It'll be the easy one to write.
No conditions.
Very good, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything to bring? Oh, oh, I did have something else I wanted to bring up.
So, if you take.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's right.
Fox Road. It's showing it from the Franklin side, but there is a connection with Miller Street. So, with Miller Street, you go Miller Street, past Kingsbury, past White, and then that's your next drive.
Coming from that direction.
Yeah, coming in from, um, from, from Myrtle Street.
So, I'll just make sure that tonight when both of you can be here.
So, anyway.
Okay, thank you. Yep.
Bob, you're here about Liberty Lane.
Liberty Lane, I just wanted to make sure that we, the design review board had a meeting with the applicant. We finalized everything, and we also, which we don't normally do, sent a copy of our, uh, decision, design review board decision, to the applicant at the applicant's request. But the, uh, the issue here was that the drawing they submitted was acceptable with the caveat that it did not deal with the condition of the screening fence around the cellular tower. And we wanted to make sure that the planning board was aware of that, and that, uh, if everyone's comfortable with that, we think that has to be remediated at the same time as they do all of the other work, uh, on the property.
Well, is that in here?
Well, what's in here is, uh, at their applicant's request, they suggested that we include a condition that says the comments of the design review board in their letter dated blank, and now they've provided a letter, September 20, dated September 27th, shall be incorporated into the plans provided for endorsement. So, it is incorporated by review.
Yeah, but, but do you have it in, in our decision?
Yes, yes. It, it was in there. It was, only the date was blank, and Betsy, Betsy filled in the date.
No, I mean, I mean, did you, other, other than having the design review board put it in there, did you specify that a fence had to go, go around the, uh?
No, the fence is there, it just needs to be repaired.
Oh.
Actually replaced. I mean, it's.
Well, we couldn't say that it was structurally failing. All we could say was that pieces of it were falling off crooked, bent, worn, whatever you wanna call it. It's, it's in disarray to the point that we felt that it needed to be noted as part of the conditions of getting their special permit.
How much total fencing are we talking about?
Uh, it, it, there probably is a total of 40 feet, and we probably saw a quarter of it that was in bad shape.
So, five panels?
Something like that. But that with the boulders creates quite an, an array for the abutting properties.
Right. Are we gonna go all with the decision?
Yeah, I mean, we, we should. I mean, I, I just have maybe a general question. How difficult was the exercise of integrating the items from the original?
Not very difficult.
Now, some of them, I think there was some question as to whether they should be included, whether they were applicable. You know, we've also had some other comments in terms of the size of the flag, and some other things have been discussed, but, I mean, you fairly confident that, that this is the, the right document now merging the past with the present? Are you feeling pretty confident that you've done that effectively?
So, that's, you looked at the original special permit and then modified it to reflect where we're at today?
So, it doesn't say that there should be no light?
Well, let's look.
Doesn't say that there should be no light.
Well, the original decision.
I think it does say that.
Yeah, the original decision said there should, there should be no light, and now they wanna light, so we.
That has to be taken in.
Yeah.
Yeah, now there's, there's a solar-powered light that's gonna, uh, light the flag during the hours of darkness.
During nighttime hours.
Hours of darkness. Well, if it's solar powered, it'll come on, you know.
Well.
One of the things that sticks in my craw about this whole thing is that, it's, it's a nit, but somebody took the shroud off the top 40 feet of the, of the pole, exposed the antennas allegedly to do some work up there, and that's over three months ago, and they have not put the shroud back on the, the pole. It looks like the devil.
Yeah, it's in the decision.
And we specifically brought it up.
It's also part of the design review board's comments.
We'll put a date on it.
And it's, it's, uh, it's entirely under their control. It has nothing to do with this board. It's just a piece of work that they haven't finished, despite the fact that the fellow stood there at one of these meetings and told me it would be done within the next two weeks from that date, whatever that was.
So, by the end of October, by November 1st, it should be done. We could put that on item D. The missing shroud covering the antenna panels shall be replaced by November 1st, 2013.
There you go. It's easy to make me happy.
By what was the date?
November 1st.
How about shall be replaced and remain in place except for routine maintenance by, because they could say, yeah, we put it up in November, then we had to take it back off in December for maintenance, and so we just.
Now, having all, said all this and made a point of it, did they not also say they were redesigning it to include an internal, um, um, flag raising mechanism or something?
I, I don't recall that. I, I don't recall that, no, I don't. I thought they.
I'd like to see that.
I thought they had said it, but it's like, Gino, is there anything about the, that you can remember about the flag raising mechanism with the ropes being inside the, so, no, okay. All right.
I don't remember. The design review board meeting, we specifically went over the shroud issue, and they acknowledged that it was an external rope that needed the shroud to be replaced.
Yeah, okay.
So, to your point, and remain in place, you know, accepting, you know, maybe, uh, short-term maintenance, you know, you know, temporary removal, short, something like that, maybe. I, I don't know whether it fell off or was removed for maintenance, or I, I don't know.
They said it was taken off for maintenance.
Well, maybe that's what it said, to, to remove for maintenance.
Now, Bob, have you seen this decision?
No.
Do you by any chance have a copy that he could look at?
Sure, you can have my copy.
So, is, so you can comment and see if we've left anything out?
So, if we said, "And shall be replaced by November 1st, 2013, and remain in place accepting periods during which active maintenance is, um, is occurring."
Is being conducted, right?
Yeah, let's, might as well, since we're adding that language, add it under E as well, with the American flags, the flout. Um, shall be displayed on the tower.
The fully sheathed.
Yeah, well, flagpole. Well, you know, whenever tow, uh, tower, flagpole is not under maintenance.
Which item?
E.
Right on the, oh.
Because we don't actually, I mean, they're saying, you know, the, kept in good condition, shall be displayed on the tower, but we're not, you know, they're not specifically saying it's gonna be there all the time.
Daily, yeah.
They haven't had it up there in 10 years.
How about you say daily, with the exception of routine maintenance?
Yeah.
Is this decision also gonna be provided to the condominium association?
Well, it's a, it's not a public record for anybody to view.
They're, they're gonna be the police force that tells you what's going on.
They, it, it was well-attended. They, they had a number of their people here, uh, in one of our public hearings, so, yeah, yeah. It's a good point. So, what language did you wanna put in E? Greg, I'm sorry.
Uh, shall be, uh, be displayed on the tower daily except during maintenance.
Short-term maintenance.
Yeah. How about I on the fence? You know, a lot of these PVCs are pretty decent fences. Do you wanna limit it to that?
So, wood PVC might be better than.
Yeah, I, I would think that PVC would, PVC would actually be better.
Yeah, I mean, it's more readily available, you know.
It's not like it used to be. It used to be really expensive.
And it turned yellow. The early stuff did.
Would you be all right with a composite?
Not a problem. We, we just wanted to make sure everyone knew that what was there.
Let's say rather than PVC or composite.
Needed to at least be refurbished.
I just think long-term, it might hold up better.
So, maybe we could say.
So, it could be a natural wood or PVC.
Or, or com, uh, composite.
Or composite, yeah. Right. Natural wood, composite, or PVC.
I think the good wood ones are actually more expensive than the PVCs.
Yeah, I just had, I just had 11 posts replaced, $3,500. But blown over last winter.
Right at the base. That's where they all go.
Yeah.
Like you have a pool, you gotta do it.
Had to, yeah. No, no, six foot, yeah. Exactly like he's describing here. Wood capped colonial style.
So, I don't see, uh, any prohibition of lights.
No, in fact, the light is talked about in E with the flag. It says a light on timer. It says light on timer. Shouldn't it be a light on, um, what did you call it? Solar? Shall illuminate the American flag? Solar-powered, solar-powered?
Because the timer will come on regardless of the time of year.
If it's solar-powered or it comes off the grid. Well, solar, I don't know if solar's the, it's the one that detects when it's dark, turns on.
Oh, so it's not a timer, it's a sensor? Oh, so it's not a timer, it's a sensor?
Yeah, sensor.
Light sensor.
Lights, thank you.
You don't want to limit them if they want to put direct power to it.
That's true.
Timer or sensor?
Yeah, timer or sensor, yeah.
Is that what the last permit was called, five years? Letter O?
Gino, was it a five-year permit last time?
I believe so, yes. I believe that just copied from the previous permit.
Really?
It went longer than five years, obviously.
It did. Oh, okay.
Did they renew it, or no?
No, they didn't renew it, no.
That was the ZBA, that, okay.
Why do I have two copies?
We all do.
Is the second one different?
The choice is good.
Oh, okay. I started with something different.
You want to make sure you're on your toes, Walter.
Yeah, okay.
So if we look at the issues that exist presently there, are they fully captured in Item D, the missing shroud, which we added some language and a date of November 1st?
Yeah, right, yeah.
Then F, which has to do with eight-foot-wide gravel walkway, proposed water bars, et cetera. I mean, there's that item, and then there's Item J, which has to do with the removal of stones and regrading the area, and landscaping and plantings, and, you know, I'm not an expert, but, I mean, I would think that if they really wanted to get this done, they could still get this done, you know, before spring, which really means before winter at this point. You know, Bob, you probably have more experience than any of us with, you know, these types of plantings, and if they could be planted successfully, you know, a month from now or something without, you know, dying over the winter.
It's critical to note that our comments, Design Review Board comments, actually identified the species of trees, evergreen trees, that we thought should be used, because they didn't put a species on their documents. And, you know, without some direction, we're not sure where that would have gone. So that's why we included that in our decision.
But the species that you picked, to Jeff's point, could be planted this fall successfully?
Absolutely, sure.
And they're readily available? I mean, certainly within a few days or a week or something.
No, it was a repeat from another decision that I'm sure they selected materials that they could get seasonally available and were commonly available. That's why we kept repeating the same comments here that we used there.
Things grow all the way up through Thanksgiving. I mean, there's plenty of time.
Well, yeah, I mean, the fall is the best time to plant trees anyway, so, I mean, as long as you're not in the deep freeze.
There isn't a problem. The only question is, is that they need to be directed, or they'll, you'll still be waiting for this a year from now.
Well, I think if we put right in the decision, November 15th, and I'm willing to adjust the shroud around that just to be consistent, November 15th for the shroud, November 15th for the gravel and the walkway, November 15th for the, you know, the other landscaping and planting. I mean, if they really want to get this done, I think they can get it done, and I think that's what the folks that appeared before this board, I think that's what they were looking for.
Do they really need an eight-foot-wide gravel path?
Well, that's, that's. An issue from, I think, maintenance.
Maintenance, to get a vehicle.
If they have to get a maintenance vehicle in there.
Oh, I thought they had said that they were never bringing a vehicle there.
Well, they don't intend to, but, you know, that's the issue.
And it was their proposal.
As I recall, this species of landscaping was something in the four-foot-high category, so it's not something that's difficult to get and install immediately.
So, Gino, I mean, not to be punitive here, I mean, I'm going to approach this as though the applicant is going to use due diligence and such, but I recall some language where there could be penalties imposed if things weren't what they should be. Now, is that, did that survive this process?
Well, there's, in the zoning bylaw, this is, this is issued under the zoning bylaw, so noncompliance, they would get a letter from the zoning enforcement officer and be subject to a three-hundred-dollar-a-day fine if they don't comply.
With any of the conditions.
Yeah, and, yeah.
So if we approve this, and then made this available to them as soon as possible, and with a cover which makes it clear, you know, that these items have been, there's been some specificity brought to these items in terms of timetable, and be advised that, you know, the town reserves the right to impose, you know, penalties of such-and-such for noncompliance. I think we need to do that, or else, you know, this is coming out of their capital plan for 2014, not 2013.
So do we want to vote on this tonight with these edits?
Yes, if we want to.
Yes, yes.
We have to.
Yep.
So who wants to make that motion?
All right, so.
Make a motion to approve the special permit for Crown Castle, decision number 2013-09, with the discussed edits this evening.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Bob?
Well, that permit was on another project. We haven't heard what's going to happen with Nine Star Drive and the engineer being placed on that project as well, so we don't know what's going on relative to, we never got a set of architectural documents, put that submission, just a second.
Well, they're coming back on what day?
Twenty-fourth.
The twenty-fourth. October 24th.
Okay, well, if we don't see something, it'll be hard to provide a comment.
Really?
Well, as far as I know, they haven't hired any engineer yet.
There's something that I noticed that had come up in a couple of locations in town, that subdivisions are putting up signs.
What kind of signs?
Subdivision signs, yeah.
New ones?
Really? Brand new. Fox Run.
So Fox Run, yeah.
Fox Run, big ones. So I asked the building commissioner for his opinion, and he has an opinion which states that the planning board can give a special permit approval for up to two years for a subdivision sign, meaning temporary.
Right.
And they can extend it if they want, but under no circumstances are these signs to be in the right-of-way. No circumstances.
What's a right-of-way, though?
The town's right-of-way. You know, you know how they have those curved walls?
Yeah.
Those are in the right-of-way. The signs are on those curved walls.
Is that accepted yet?
It's not accepted yet.
So it's not a right-of-way?
Well, but as soon as they start asking for their money back on their bond.
Is it a temporary sign or a permanent?
It's a permanent sign.
Is it?
Absolutely a permanent sign.
That's a whole different issue, which is that bylaw which you just cited was for a temporary sign.
Correct.
So that, it doesn't meet either of the requirements, it's not temporary, and it's in the right-of-way.
No signs are allowed in the right-of-way. Has absolutely nothing to do with whether it's temporary or it's.
Right, right, but it violates our [inaudible].
Yes, yes.
That was a big Tom Burke issue, if you remember.
Yeah, I do remember that, yeah. Well, you know, it goes along. I mean, there are no other subdivisions in town that, well, actually, there is one. There's one.
Village of Riverside.
Oh, no, that's in the B-1. We allow them in the B-1 district, right?
It's actually C.
Or, yeah, we gave them permissions in certain areas.
So what other one has it?
There's one on Grove Street, Strawberry Hill, or?
No.
No, I don't think that has a sign.
Unless it's collapsed by now, but they, they kept that.
They used to have a sign at least. I think it's still there.
Yeah, I think it might still be there.
Can I, Bob?
Yeah, I know, I've seen it.
Yeah, so that's the only one. That's the only one in town, and that was, that's because it's a really old subdivision. So anyway, so I have the language from Bob. I'm just going to send the language out, and there's, Saddle Ridge also is planning on putting in signs. They have a place for a plaque in their wall.
I talked to him, he said he's not putting up a sign.
Oh, he did?
Maybe it's an address. Oh, no, because that wouldn't make sense.
Right.
Street name?
Yeah, so anyway.
You know what? It's probably something they regularly do with all their subdivisions.
They might just be a regular detail.
Yeah, but they knew. They knew because they were asked about whether they were planning on putting in signs, and they said, oh, no, not after we read your zoning.
Who said that, Fox Run?
Yeah, yeah.
Who? The early applicants and the now owners?
No, 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 Paul, the guy that comes here regularly to our meetings.
You mean Mark?
Is it Mark? I thought it was Paul. Oh.
Mark Kamau, yeah. There's two Marks, Mark and Mark.
Mark?
Yeah, I don't remember.
Mark Mastriani and Mark Kamau.
Hearing plans for.
So, so when he was at our meeting, when he was asked about putting up signs, he said, oh, no, not after we've read the zoning, we have no intention of putting up signs.
You get everything straightened out with your meeting with the fire chief?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You know what happened with that? This is unbelievable. The, to access the barn, they had, originally had Warren Drive. Warren Drive came onto the property, went in front of the original house, and straight down to the barn. Well, they ended up building a house right where that access point was, and they had temporary easement on the side of the house leading down to the barn. So then, the, they sold the house. So they had to get rid of the, they had to get rid of the temporary easement, because it wasn't going to go with the house that they sold, so they had no other means of access in the barn. So, you know, when the chief heard about that, he said that he, that they have to have access, or it's going to be closed down.
You're talking about during the construction of the new roadway? There would be no access?
Until it's constructed, right, yeah.
So what do they do?
So they are going to at least get a temporary drive in there for them to be able to get it in. And chief was very adamant about, so you're going to have this done in two weeks? So he was.
Can they maintain that temporary easement until it's in place?
Going to have to. So they were not supposed to build that house in that location until the end.
I see.
So they built it early and sold it.
What have we heard from Concom as far as the trail?
That was my next thing I was going to bring up.
Oh, good.
I left my, I have the actual plan of the trails in my car. I didn't bring it in. If you want me to get it, I will. But they, I think that we should go ahead with our accessing the land the way we intended to with an easement, because they're not going to go along with extending the path on the other end. So if someone would walk in there and they.
Who's there, Steve?
What's that?
Who's there?
There, Concom. They own all the land adjacent to where the barn and everything is.
Okay.
So they own up to the driveway.
Oh.
So, and there's a little patch of wetlands, tiny.
So when I saw a plan that dog-legged in, that didn't work?
Well, that's the plan that they proposed to us.
Yeah.
And I would almost say, we should go, we should follow through with that, because if we don't follow through, it's going to go away. We may have problems, no matter what.
Yeah, I think I agree with you. I think it took on, you know, kind of a life of its own, because there were some ideas about some parking spaces, et cetera.
I squashed that. I said, there's no way we're putting parking in there.
So, I, so I think we're on the same page.
Yeah.
I don't think, I mean, even Polty didn't want parking, did they?
No, 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 not at all.
So who wanted parking?
Someone on the Concom. They wanted us to get access off their drive and put a parking lot.
Yeah, Steve and I went to Concom meeting.
And, and I just said to Concom, I said, the only people that are going to be parking there are the people at the barn.
Right. And they are parking anywhere.
So Concom is not going to go along with the other side of the trail. The part that touches the wetland, or the buffers are. They're not, they're not going to go along with that trail. They're trying to say, we should try to get Walter to give us back the trail in that area. So I don't know whether or not.
Good luck.
Yeah, I know, I know. But, you know, we do kind of have them over the barrel, because they are the original applicants. They are the ones that are responsible for the trails. So we may be able to do it.
I mean, I think the only concern would be if there was some type of fencing installed, you know, that would make it inaccessible potentially. I don't know if that would happen, if it would create such a path that it would actually be physically in wetlands, I mean, as in wet.
Oh, oh, it would, no, the real wetlands don't come up anywhere near that far.
So practically, it may not be.
Yeah, yeah. But, but we could have the ability to push, to have them give us a little bit of an easement for the, for the trail system. Because that's one of the existing trails. Has nothing to do with the Board of Selectment's decision, as is one of the trails behind some of those houses that, who were actually complaining about the trails going in. They said, no new trails, but one of those trails back there is an existing trail.
You mean the ones beyond Shady Way?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, those have been, they're animal trails that grew.
And they are marked on the plans as being existing trails. So, you know, the restrictions that we thought we had on the trail system are not quite as extensive as we originally thought they were. We'll have access to the bulk of the property, we just have to straighten out that one little section.
Right.
Where the, where there's the problem with the edging, the edge on the, being on the edge of the wetlands.
Till they get some real roads in there, I can never even figure my way around. It's just, it's confusing.
Well, I can get the trail map for you if you want to see it. I mean, you'd be able to figure it out.
I trust you, Steve.
You know, just, you know, signing some of the, some of the vouchers here, some of the, some of the costs related to the crosswalk activity, it's becoming fairly substantial. So maybe we need to ask, you know, Bob, who's doing a great job, Bob McGee, but maybe we need to just ask him so that, you know.
Don't go over.
Well, just, I mean, it's a sidewalk fund, and, you know, we have to manage the.
We've kept it at thirty-eight thousand, so we'll keep track of that.
Okay. When we voted it.
Did you pull one?
Yeah, we did cap it.
He got his money out of the state, I'm assuming, too, for the other half, right? And they look great.
They do.
They do, yeah.
Yeah, did we have to do the two here in front of the church and library and go over, because they're closed again now?
Yeah, I think, I think.
They're doing the ones on the lower end, yeah, by the bottom of Town Hill.
Donna knows.
No, I believe Greg's correct, though. I think they have some isolated.
The down floor didn't let that one set.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, so they.
They had to go back at it.
Well, it's better than failing later.
Yeah, they didn't have to dig it all up, but I think they had some isolated areas where they had to reorder and such, so. And it wasn't the actual stone, right, it was the mortar underneath.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
The stone is, you know.
They look, I mean, the other ones look, even those ones, they look, were great. They look really good.
And hopefully, they'll last for a hundred years.
Yeah, well, however shows those bricks made a mistake.
Well, they were part of the design of the, that the state had. That was part of the TIP project?
Yeah, that was all part of the TIP project.
Brick? Yeah.
Brick can work if you pick the right brick.
I guess. My understanding is now that we've heard from people that even going to get concrete brick, that fails, too.
Yeah, I think so. I think, yeah, that's true.
You saw how long Bob angst over it.
You live in Boston, and different things they've used are crosswalks and everything. None of them last, except for really the cobbles.
Right.
And those have been there since 1700s.
We got three signatures on those. No.
Okay.
Do you want to sign the decision for Crown Castle? Gino and I will make those amendments.
Are there drawings that require signature, too, on that?
They'll have to submit the bylaw plans for endorsement, and that's what they'll file with the registrars.
Well, do we have a motion to adjourn? Well done.
Should we discuss the consultant contract expiring 10/31, or leave it to the next?
Nah, we can leave that one open. But both of them, right?
The Board of House is putting their RFP out.
Can we go through this last year?
What steps do we need to... Do we have to do that, too?
Yeah.
What about Gino's? Both of them?
My main question is, what's going on with the plan? Does that involve any...
None involved us at all.
Any progress on it?
No, not a slight study.
So we can still set a contract with Gino and pay him accordingly?
Pay him per diem also?
No.
So we have to set an RFP?
That's the standard procedure.
Right.
Although you can just extend the contract that you have, but...
Maybe Gino will hold out for more money?
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Thanks, Donna.